A call to order in this regular reading of the Navasota City Council on Monday, the 12th of August, and council chambers let the record show all council members are present. Welcome and thank you for being here tonight. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode and the visitors, if you would please sign in. If you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in back, state your name and address at the podium, as we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Reverend Matt Cecil of First United Methodist Church, then followed by the pledges.
Almighty and gracious God, we are before you today as your people, we are before you today here as citizens seeking to make a better community, a safer community, a represented community. Lord, we ask your blessings on this time, on this moment in our lives where we can come to be about your work and the work of your people. Lord, we give you thanks for the work that has already been done through the city council. We give you thanks for the work of this city through police officers and firefighters and first responders. We give you thanks for the wonderful community that we have here and that has been on display all summer long. And Lord, as we now turn into a new season, even in the midst of scorching heat, as we turn into a season of school and fall and what it means to be back in classrooms for so many in our community, teachers and students, we ask your guidance, we ask your patience, we ask your peace in this transition. Lord God, the work that is done here tonight so that we might keep you first and so that we might keep this community first as well. Lord, we pray all these things in your holy and wonderful name, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm on Texas's flag, I pledge allegiance to the duty to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You have one.
Deborah Richardson.
Counsel, Deborah Richardson, 1202 Lane Street in Navasota. Just have a few comments on the budget that you're going to be discussing. I was glad to see you put a library clerk in there and it was mentioned that it was going to be for lunch hours to cover, you know, when somebody was off. That's good, but I'd also like to see you perhaps give it enough money to cover Saturdays also, for half a day Saturday. That would be good. And then like on page six, your staffing, at the very bottom of that area, you put consider health insurance for retirees. And the first thing on that list is to get new interns. I'd like you to kind of flip that to put retirees, health insurance first, even if it's just for the employee, you know, maybe not their family, just something because if you keep pushing it down, it'll never get done. There's always going to be something new that the city really does need. So I think we should give a higher priority to that. And I had a question, I guess you'll answer it when you get to the details. The library roof costing like quarter of a million dollars, I don't get that $225,000 for a roof for building that size. I'm sure there's some reason, but if you could be sure to explain why that cost is so high. Also, on page 16 about the garbage, I was a little confused. You said that it was going to be tied to the Consumer Price Index, which they do every year. Does that mean it's going to go up every year without coming before council? Does that mean we've built in an automatic thing? So I hope not, you know. So, and that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. You noted all that, sir. Okay, is that all we had, Susan?
Yes, sir.
All right, item number four, staff report, Mr. Weeks.
Mayors and council, I'm going to have Jason Kokoski, our fire chief, come up and introduce one of our new firefighters, returning firefighter. He's actually a volunteer and was here full-time a while back.
Mayor and council, I'm happy to introduce John Flores, which I think most of you already know John. John started as a volunteer with the fire department in 2002, at the same time also joining the city staff as a groundskeeper at the golf course, at the old nine-hole course. He worked his way up from that to become the facilities maintenance manager before taking a little leave and going to work for one of our local businesses here. We had his spot come back open here at the fire department in between time, back in 2012. He also got his certification, his full certification as a firefighter. So he wanted to come back, he wanted to take on that, fill that role for us. And at the same time, there was a need in our Parsons Facilities Maintenance and he has agreed to take on that job as well temporarily until they can do something else there on a full-time scale. So we're glad to have John back. He's going to be a great asset to us and we're happy to have him.
Mayor, next, we're going to have John McKay come up and give a brief update on our CIP projects. Keyword, brief.
I figured that was the keyword. Good evening, Mayor and Council. John McKay, graduate engineer, just touching on the high points here. We've got now on the, what we've been calling the CIP project, every service is now flipped over to the new lines. We're chasing down last couple of tie-ins on the other side of streets, but everyone's on the new PVC lines that's going to be. That's really good news for us. The water well project is the most exciting going on this week. Later on this week, they're going to be mobilizing their large rig. That takes a massive, over a half acre footprint to get that set up going. So they're right now, I mean at Wednesday, Thursday, it may lead into Friday, getting all the equipment moved out there. But right now, they're drilling their temporary well and they're getting set up for the big rig to drill down that thousand-plus feet that we're expecting on this water well number eight. Any questions?
I had a question about the, sorry about the roads. I noticed that there were barrels that were put up in the middle of the road on the Old Town. There was three or four cuts that were made into the road. And if I hadn't had more than probably five or six people ask about it, I wouldn't ask. But just to, what exactly did you have to do to cut into the new road that we just put down?
So I'm expecting that what you're looking at is water valves in that area?
Water valves.
Yeah, okay. So what's happened, and Kishnik tried it both ways and first way really didn't work, but at the end of the day, we want, you've seen on some of the streets where they have that concrete box around the valves. So what happened was they tried to pour those first and the paving machinery just ripped that all up as they were going through. So what they found is a much better solution is they go through and they cut the asphalt at the end, let the machine run through smooth and then go through and pour it. That way we're not having a cracked concrete box. So that's what they're doing is they're pouring those concrete boxes around the valves. They did the same thing over manholes. You'll have noticed it on some of the newer Texod overlays here in town. And what it really helps prevent is it keeps your valves easier to access, it's easier to find them. Again, just today, we found another valve that was paved over in part of town and it kind of helps that from happening because you're not, when you're paving, you're not trying to miss a black circle with black asphalt. You've got this big square there that kind of gives you stability and visibility.
I was going to say it stabilizes so it doesn't turn into a dip after a certain time.
Exactly.
Like the one that we have.
Because the one on La Salle seemed to be working really great.
Yeah, no, they're real good design choice.
Good. Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Got updates on boards and commissions from the August 1st planning and zoning meeting. The final site plan for Mount Calvary Baptist Church was approved. And the approval of a preliminary plat by Cross Trails Development for Pecan Grove Estates for 146 lots, single dwelling residential subdivision was also approved.
And on August the 8th, planning and zoning met, so busy meeting for them. There was a conditional use permit application from the city for a parking lot. The permit application was approved, but the site plan was not approved. And so I think the staff's going to bring that back. There was a zoning amendment for the purpose of prohibiting tobacco, hookah, and vapor sales. That was approved with removing the word tobacco. There was a conditional use permit application for parking on the Neil Martenson property and it was tabled. Then there was a replat application submitted by Redboard LLC for the O'Reilly Auto Parts Store on North La Salle and it was approved. And then a replat submitted by JCLB Investments for some property on Dove Crossing Lane and it was approved.
Any other reports in council? All right, just some things I wanted to mention here. We had recognition of one of our police officers. Evan Peterson was awarded from the Brazos Valley Traffic and Safety Coalition for his work with impaired driving prevention. So we want to congratulate Officer Peterson for that. The library's summer reading program, we ended up with 35, I guess you call them graduates because they were, they went through an eight-week program and for 35 kids to go through eight weeks, that's pretty impressive, I think. So wanted to point that out and thank all the staff at the library and Tiffany and everyone for making a great success that was. One of our industrial partners in Navasota in the industrial park, Forge Components, was recognized as Business of the Quarter by the Chamber of Commerce. So we want to congratulate Forge Components for that. I think services, notary services have been rolled out, yes or no? I'm not sure if it's totally exactly done yet, but I believe soon we'll be offering notary services at the library. So that's something I know is a need around the community, so we're glad that we can provide that.
Is this work a free service?
Yes.
Right now.
We've actually been providing it for years. We just now have two.
Okay, yeah, apologize for that, but just a reminder then, because I see on Facebook all the time, oh, I can get a notary, where do I go? So anyway, now you know. Then just as a reminder, we also sent out some information on utility billing. You can pay your bills online, you can look at your statement, pay online, schedule payments, look at your consumption, get alerts on usage of water and gas, I think.
Right.
And so that's something that you can go to navassotatx.gov and get signed up for. And also while you're there, you can sign up for the alerts and for the, for future surveys on Flashvote. And then also just reminding everyone to be sure and get hooked up with our City of Navasota Facebook page and also the library page and so you can keep up with all the events that are going on. There's lots of things going on and we want to make sure you know all about it. Forge and Commissions, we're taking applications. Those, I think the deadline on that is September 9th. And so if you're interested in applying for the positions that will become open for the new fiscal year, starting on October 1st, we would invite you to look into that. You can go to the website to find out more about the different types of commissions that we have and get any more details that way. Or you can also call and talk to Michelle or Suzie if you need some more details. Tomorrow, I believe, the mobile mammogram will be at the library from Texas Southern University, is that right? Okay. And what's, is there a time on that or they have to make appointment or how's that work?
No, they're actually full.
Oh, they're full, okay, okay.
But they'll have an interim.
Another one coming up soon, okay. And then just coming up on calendar, we've got showing Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, Mutant Mayhem is showing at Booley Park at Sunset on the 16th, it's a Friday, for Family Movie Night. So come on out for that. I hear it'll be about probably two or three degrees cooler than it is now. So be sure to come out, bring out the family for that. The next GED and English as a Second Language classes will be on the 19th at the Navasota Center, August 19th. And you just show up there to get signed up, but there'll be again information on social media and through other outlets to give you more details on that. But that's the next session is on the 19th. And then Night Under the Stars at the Navasota Center is on the 30th of August and that will be from 3 to 8. And what it is, the Astronomy Dome by the Houston Museum of Natural Science is going to be here. And I've seen a lot of people showing interest about that online, so I'm sure to come out for that. Anything else?
Yeah, so Daddy Daughter Dance just got announced today. So if you'll go to our Facebook page, within the last hour, we're able to publish that. It's going to be September 13th at 6:00 PM at the Navasota Center. So that's a program that I've asked for since I've been here and so Tiffany and her group and on and them were able to push forward with that. So be sure if you're interested to sign up for that. Also want to give a shout out to Taylor Hughes, our Marketing Communications Manager. She just finished up our Last Sounds of Summer event series and so with a huge crowd at this past Friday for Brown Sugar Band. So congratulations on a successful series and she's been doing a great job with those. So that's all I got today, Mayor.
Okay. Item five is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes for July 2024 and the municipal court report for July 2024.
Mr. Mayor, we approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes and municipal court reports for July 24th.
Motion by Mr. Gesner, second by Mr. Foltz to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. See none item carries. And we'll move now to item number six, conducting a workshop conceding Navasota Fiscal Year 2425 proposed annual budget. Mr. Weeks.
All right, Mayor, Mayor's Council, and the public. So tonight, we're going to wiggle, roll through the proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2425. Again, a reminder, our fiscal year budget starts October 1st and goes through September 30th. So the plan is, I think the last two years, we've kind of powered through it on our first night. So we're going to go through, I think, about 136 slides. I think we can do it. We did it last year going through here, but if you have any questions, please stop me during it so we can ask questions. I'll do a large portion of the kickoff of it until we get to the department budgets and each department director will get up and go over their budgets. And then we'll finish up with some of our other water, sewer, gas funds and other funds. So again, if you have any questions, please let me know. So as you know, our mission statement is a beautiful, progressive, vibrant, service-oriented, close-knit community filled with historic charm. And this is what we want Navasota to be, is what America wants to be. And so if you'll remember back last spring, we developed a two- to three-year strategic plan. So we focused on planning and economic development, marketing communications, quality of life, staffing, human resources, facilities, buildings, and infrastructure. And so as we move forward through this budget preparation, we kept those things in mind. If you also remember back in the spring of this year, March, we went through a budget retreat. And so the majority of the things you're going to see in the budget are those things that we mentioned in the budget retreat back in March. But also back in May, through Flashvote, we held a survey. I can't remember the total number of participants, but we had, because we just had re-leased it, but we came up with some questions here. We wanted to look at the strengths of Navasota. And so the number one strength of Navasota was community events and programs. And then the physical safety and security and sense of community inclusion came in number two there, that kind of tied. And then number three was library materials and programs. And if you'll notice at the very bottom there, on the lowest was the strengths was condition of our streets and sidewalks and water and wastewater infrastructure. So when you look at, what are the most important things to the person we asked to survey? Number one was condition of the streets, number two was physical safety and security, and then number three was the water and wastewater infrastructure. So taking that into mind, you'll notice there that the water and wastewater and the condition of the streets are the, when you look at, they were high importance and low on satisfaction. And so these two areas were categories, like I said, importance is greater than 50%, but satisfaction is significantly lower than 50%. And then we asked, if we can make any additional investments, which of the following would you prioritize? Of course, number one was better streets. And then I would say when you came in, a five-way tie was those items in the middle. And so as we go through the budget process, we kind of kept all this in mind. And so looking at Navasota's economic picture, make sure you know what active major developments we have. On the residential side, we've got Pecan Lakes Phase Four, which is the last phase of Pecan Lakes. We got Hidden Hills Phase Two, Pecan Grove Estates Phase One. Pecan Grove is the one, is the development right there in front of Pecan Lakes. It's the last development that we just came to council for approval. And so they've actually kicked off and started doing, clearing out some of the trees and brush and buildings that were out there. So they've been removing that. And then we got Roseville Street Expansion and Dove Crossing Phase One. On the commercial side, Starbucks is not quite open yet, but they are still doing some brickwork out there. If you noticed Walmart remodel interior, so if you ride by Walmart, they've got a huge fence up there that's for them to redo Walmart. If you've been in Walmart, it's like a disaster zone, so you'll tell they're doing some remodeling. Sonya Hills Strip Center, that's over here at the Triangle area where the new barber shop that we, they did a grand opening, I think over this last weekend. McDonald's is doing a remodel. Zeitman's Grocery downtown is in the process of construction, Mid-South Headquarters remodeled. O'Reilly standalone store, as Councilman Foltz just mentioned, that was approved for, through P&amp;Z. We got Flight Wildfire Mead, they're projecting, I think, September opening, Baylor Backyard. They just finished up their, their new extension there for Baylor Lumber, a portion of it. And then Flyaway Sea Store, that's going to be the convenience store that's out in Pecan Lakes area. When you look at the building permits, 2023 was our highest year in the last couple of years with 157. When you look at our historical new improvements, nearly $36 million for the tax, this tax share that we're coming up on. And then for 2022 was around $34 million. So when you look at budget highlights in this budget, staff's proposing a tax decrease around 1.43 cents from 52.21 cents to 50.78 cents per 100 cents valuation. The proposed utility rates are based on the utility rate study that was conducted last year, which is an 8.2% increase in water, a 10.5% in natural gas, and a 6.7% in sewer. What that means to an average user of those services is around a $12.62 increase per month. When you compare that with what increases we had last October, water increase was around 17%, gas was 22%, and sewer was 38%. So significant reduction and again, it's based on the utility rate study that we conducted. We're adding key staff.
Doesn't that also have to do with the CPI like Ms. Richardson mentioned earlier?
So that does not have to do with any of the CPI. No, not till we get to the, to the item, we can actually go through, we got the pass-through trash rate of 3.88% and residents will experience a 90 cent per month increase. So right as I was coming onboard, council had approved, I think it's a five-year agreement with Republic Services and that agreement says every July, they'll go and they look at the CPI index and whatever that CPI index is, is how much that rate increase is. So if there is a CPI index that's positive, whatever that number is, it's, that's what the rates are based on. And so it's a pass-through. So last year, it was a 7.7% increase and this year, it's a 3.8% increase. We're adding new staff. These 11 new proposed staff is, there's nothing new in here from what was mentioned in, back in March. In fact, some of the positions we mentioned in March, we're not able to fund those, but proposed is, actually it says three traffic enforcement officer, that's wrong. So it's actually, it's a traffic enforcement officer, a part-time, it's supposed to say full-time traffic enforcement officer, a part-time assistant fire chief, a parks and recreation specialist, a part-time library clerk, main street manager, and that main street manager is going to be funded 100% through the hotel motel funds, two heavy equipment operators, and four utility technicians. So that is for the two water crews. So for two water crews, you got to have one heavy equipment operator and two utility technicians for a crew. Yes, sir.
Okay, question. What's the park and recreation specialist?
So the park, we'll actually get into it when we get to that, but that park and recreation specialist is going to help out with programming for the parks. And then we've allocated around $294,000 for salary merit increases, which will be up to 4% for all full-time employees. And that includes the FICA, the TMRS, and the workers' compensation portion. Our TMRS rates increased from 6.24% to 6.65%. We don't have a control over that. TMRS lets us know what that percentage is. We have a-
That's for retirement.
Correct, that's for the retirement. And for the medical benefits through Blue Cross Blue Shield Texas, we did not have a guaranteed rate lock-in for the medical portion. And so that originally started out at 10% and our hub international, our third-party consultant was able to get that down to 6% and that equates to around $43,000 of additional cost. So the city will bear 6% for the employees on the dependent coverage. The employees that have dependent coverage will have to carry their 6% increase on their own. We're also increasing life insurance from $30,000 to $50,000 per employee. Standard, most cities are at $50,000 plus for, and sometimes it's one times your salary. And so there was a small premium available to a little over $4,100 to increase it up to $50,000. So we increased the life insurance from 30 to 50,000. Part of that was, we actually had employee this year that just started and passed away within the short period after starting here. And so we think it's beneficial to be able to increase that to help out that employee's family should something happen, happen to them while they're employed here. Fund balances, so fund balances for the general fund is 27.95%. We have a requirement of 25%, so we're above it. The water fund is at 73.17, natural gas is at 42.36, and sewer fund is at 66.6- Natural gas is at 42.36 and sewer fund is at 66.6%. To kind of give you an idea of what that, where we were last year. So general fund, last year, we were projecting at 28.6, we're pretty, pretty close to that. The water fund, we are projecting 68.3%. So we're a little higher this year. And natural gas, we were at 27%. So again, natural gas was really low last year and so that's why the rates were up 22% was to catch us up. So we're projecting a 42.36% fund balance. And then for wastewater, last year we projected 55 and then we're at 66. So again, we're increasing those fund balances. The reason we have those fund balances is to build up funds to be able to pay one time of your debt payments and then your CIP projects for those years. And then supplementals, we had a total requested of 11, nearly 11.3 million dollars funded 10.2 in the budget. And don't let that scare you, but 10.2, the majority of that is related in the water fund related to CIP projects. So we look at total revenues, so the total revenues and expenditures for your entire budget, expenditures is around $52.3 million. So primary increases on that, you'll look, if you see the grants fund down in other operating, the grants fund represented 7.5 million. So toward the very end of the, actually, at the last slide that we're going to have tonight, will show you what kind of grant CIP projects. And so if you'll notice on the revenues are offsetting for that. So our grants, we make sure that the grants, the revenue expenditures equal. And so we got 7.5 million in grants for CIP projects. And then we're projecting another $5 million for water CIP projects up in the water fund. So part of that 15 million, 5 million of that is for CIP projects. So that broken down, if you'll look there, for total revenue, the majority of the revenue is in the general fund and water fund. So the general fund and water fund represent about 58% of your revenues. And the general fund plus all of your utilities, water, sewer and gas represents about 77% of your revenue. Compare that to your expenditures side. Your expenditures, your general fund plus your water, which represents around $32 million is 60% of the funds expenditures. And then your general fund plus all of your utilities, water, sewer, gas and sewer is around $41 million or 78% of your total budget. General fund revenues, so general fund revenues, when we look at, over here on your last column, right here, we talk about amounts here. When we look at right down through here and we look at the percentages here, so kind of want to hit some of the differences here. So of course, property tax increases are due to, our assessed valuations increased around 12.3% for this year. Plus we added $36 million of new properties. So that's part of the increase. Number two there, which is your IDAs, your IDAs increased around 10.3%. Your IDAs are, your industrial development agreements are tied to assessed valuation. So it's part of that 12.36. In addition to that, our IDAs for this coming next year is going to be, we moved from a 50% to a 60%. That was part of the new agreement, was they'll be paying 60% of the assessed valuation. So that's part of the increase. Number three down here, when we look at 14.6 in charges and fines, as I noted, we are adding a traffic enforcement officer. So that's going to make two traffic enforcement officers. The current traffic enforcement officer's only been on duty with his vehicle about a month. And so really hasn't had a lot of opportunity to do any traffic enforcement. But with the other traffic enforcement officers coming on, that means there's going to, there's going to be some more tickets and fines. And so there's a portion that's been added for additional fees for fines. And then the last item is your 129%. So why we have 129, nearly 130% increase? So down there in other, that's where we program our loans and short-term financing. So in the budget, we've got around $1.2 million for loans and short-term financing for the dispatch consoles. If you remember earlier this year, we told you about PD needing their dispatch consoles. We thought that USDA would provide us a grant. They ran out of grant funds and so we need to actually purchase those. So that's on a loan program. We've also got, as Ms. Richardson talked earlier about the roof replacement, so we were financing that portion. We're going to be financing the design and engineering for the new fire station as well as a fire rescue UTV, the SHIRP rescue vehicle. And so when fire comes in and talks about their budget, they'll be able to show you exactly what that means. When we look at sales tax, sales tax is flat. We kind of plateaued on our sales tax, so we didn't increase that that much. And so as, to make sure that you're aware and the public is aware, right now, if you purchase something inside the city limits, you pay 8.25% sales tax, 6.25 goes to the state. So the huge chunk of that goes to the state. The general fund keeps 1% for use for public services. And another 0.375% of that goes to reduction of taxes, your actual property taxes. And then the EDC gets 0.125%. In addition to that, the county, Grimes County gets 50%, 0.5 cents of that eight and a quarter. So any, any economic development, anything that we have going on here, it helps the county into reduce the county property tax rate. As we talk about tax rates, so the proposed, this budget's been proposed on a tax rate of 0.5078 compared to our current tax rate of 0.5221 or 52 cents. That's broken down in between our maintenance and operations, which is for salaries and for police, fire and general government and public work services. And that's 0.4599. And then we have it, interest and sinking rate. The interest and sinking rate is that rate that we pay our debt from. So any general obligation debt is paid from that and that's around a little over 4 cents. The average home value increased from 181,000 to around 198,000. The no new revenue tax rate is 0.4861. That's what they consider the same rate to provide you, if the same property's on the tax roll as last year, that's what that rate would be. And the voter approval rate is 0.5215. And so going through the calculations, in the beginning, when we started working on and finalizing the budget, the appraisal district had calculated the voter approval rate as the 0.5078. And so we finalized the budget, got it out to y'all. And then the next day, the appraisal district let us know, hey, we made a mistake. There's a new, a new tax law that allows some other calculations to happen and the software company didn't calculate that in. It would calculate it as zero and they said, no, you've got to actually calculate it out into multiple digits. And so if there was a negative number, they were, they were rating it as a zero. And the state says, no, you actually have to rate it as a negative number. And so when that happened, it caused that voter approval rate to increase from 0.5078 to 0.5215. And so what does that mean? Council, again, the budget you have prepared for you tonight is based on the 0.5078. Should you choose to want to move forward with the actual voter approval rate of 0.5215, you can do that. We have other action items tonight that that's what you will need to consider. But that would mean about a 1 point, a 1 and 3/7 cent addition to the budget here, which means that the general fund would receive about $106,000 more. If that's the pleasure of the council, staff is recommending we bank that. We don't, we don't try to find a way to spend it. We just put it in the bank and goes to fund balance. But that's something to consider as we move through tonight for this. As we talk about assessed valuations, as I mentioned, assessed valuations were around $772 million of assessed valuations, which is around 12.36% increase. As I mentioned, the average home value is 198,000. And then the total proposed tax rate is 0.5078. When we look at expenditures, again, I want to look at this column over here, we look at percentages and identify some of the reasons for the percentage increases. So we utilized our utility building manager in the financial services department, there's a vacancy in there. And so we utilized that and we're going to reclassify that as an HR generalist in the HR department. And so when we get to the HR department, Kristen will talk more about that, but that was, there was an increase, why that HR increased. We moved a meter tech that was in financial services. That position went out when there was a misreading on the water meter or there were some connections that needed to be done. That was being done by that position. It was more water fund related. And since there was a vacancy in that position, we thought it was best to go on and move that over to the water fund. So that position's been moved to the water fund. And then we had a vacancy in fleet, fleet services. And so a fleet tech, we use that vacancy position along with firefighter Flores' stipend that we, he's been receiving for a short time period here. We're going to reallocate that and actually hire a parks and facility maintenance manager for next year. Our marketing and communications department increased due to the addition of the main street manager. And the police, the police increased due to the traffic enforcement officer addition as well as the dispatch consoles. Fire increased due to adding a part-time assistant chief and the equipment that goes along with that position as well as the design of the new fire station, the design and engineering and the addition of a off-road amphibious UTV. And then in the parks, the library and parks, which is combined down here for library and recreation, increased there. We added the park and recreation specialist. We're adding a parks master plan. We added the part-time library clerk. And then we're adding the library roof. If you'll remember, since I've been here, the roof has leaked. And so we've had several people try to come out and fix the leak. We had some bids that were, I think around, they were less than $50,000 for fixing the leak on some items. And then we ran it through TML. We had a consultant come out from TML. They said, you don't need to spend that. We got, we got it, somebody can come in and fix it. We thought those were fixed. We called them back. Actually, Kerry had to get them to come back after a nasty letter and said, hey, you need to come back and fix your mistakes here. They came back and fixed it. But we've had some large, a large amount of rain this year. And with that, the building continues to leak significantly. Back when I first came, we did go out for a bid and that bid came in close to $200,000. And so we explained to that consultant or that vendor, something that large, we're actually have to do a seal bid. And so that's where the $200,000 came from. We've already reached out to local vendors to find out how much a new roof would be. The, again, it was around 200. The extra 25 was because it's been a year and a half since we did that. And I think the cost of materials have increased. So again, I would hope we wouldn't have to spend 225, but I'd need a budget for whatever we need to get a new roof on it.
Especially when you get comparison quotes, I know from my experience, it should not cost anywhere near that.
Again, we're only going to issue the debt for the amount of the bid that comes in. So ideally, if council approves moving forward with this, we would go out for bid and then issue debt somewhere in late December first to January. So we would actually have the bids in, so we knew what we would have to issue the debt for. So talk about general fund, summing and fund balance. So if you look here, we have what we consider a balanced budget. So balanced budget means you take beginning, beginning fund balance, you add your revenues, you manage your expenditures and you're not, it doesn't mean you come up with zero. What that means is, is you come up with what your fund balance requirement is. Your fund balance requirement says you've got to have a little over $4 million and we have projected at 4.5. So we have significant increase over the required amount, at least for, we have a total of 27, nearly 28% fund balance. That time last year, we had projected to be 29%. So really close to what we actually budgeted last year. This actual number here for the audited number, this 41.9, when we went through the budget process, we had projected that to be at 40%. So we pretty well hit that on target. And also just to make note, though we are spending right at 945,000 more than we bring in in revenue, the total one-time supplements that we've added, one-time cost items is 1.5. So this, this is one of those slides, so you're going to see four of these slides. These one slides represent the portion, a percentage portion of your entire fund budget. And so this is the general fund, major budget items. What you have on the screen here represents right at nearly 78% of the total expenditures. So the rest, as you go through, the departments go through their budgets, you'll see some of the repeats of these, but you'll also try to, the other part is seeing the other 20-something percent. So personnel represents nearly $8 million and it represents over 50% of the total budget. Existing salaries is around 7.4. We're adding the merit increases of 4%, which is the 249,000. Addition of the five new employees is around 300,000. Republic Services garbage is 1.3. The annual street maintenance program, so understanding that that was one of the high priorities in the study. I've heard that from council and we've heard it on Facebook. We've increased the annual street budget by $200,000 for next year. Capital lease and purchases, which represents some of those, some of those big-ticket items such as the fire amphibious vehicle and the dispatch consoles. Even though we're expending that this year, we're also budgeting for the first year payment. That way, we're not waiting a year. We also, we're going to make that first payment. So you got those payments plus the other payments related to the fire truck and those other backhoes for street department, those things that we're making payments on as well as our capital lease for our enterprise vehicles. That represents nearly 751,000. As I mentioned, the design and engineering for the fire station is 600,000. Replacement of the roof for the library, 225. The annual mowing contract is 300,000. So the contract we have is for one year. And so we're going out for bid for that. So that's 300,000 budgeting for that. And then motor vehicles around 168,000 and then 127,000 for electricity. Again, this represents right at 78% of the total general fund budget. As we move into the water fund, water fund, the difference is here, why, why are these, this difference over here of 8.2%? Again, as a reminder, the water rate increases are 8.2%. When you look at, that's based on an average user of 6,000 gallons of water, which represents $4.92 per month increase for that user. The other increase further down under grant funds, that is using the remaining ARPA funds. So we got around $2 million for the ARPA funds. We used a portion of that to purchase the land for the fire station. And now we're using the remaining portion of that to fund the water well that we currently have going on, water well number eight out at, across from Cow Talk. And then the number three item here, when you look at the 6.3 million difference here for bond proceeds. And so that is bond proceeds and short-term loan. We're in need to go on and move forward with another water well, so it'll be water well number nine. We're looking at the ground storage and water plant. We budgeted a total of $4 million for the water tower, ground storage tank and the water plant. The water tower alone came in at 3.8 million. And so we don't think we've got enough funds to be able to cover the water plant as well as the ground storage. And so might need to issue some more debt for that. Again, we won't issue debt until these projects get closer to being done on the large CIP until we, that way we can narrow down exactly how much we need to issue. But with that, along with the backhoe and the skid steer for the two water crews, represents the 6.3 million needed for bond proceeds. On the expense side, the increase in the water production is related to adding the On the expense side, the increase in the water production is related to adding the six new full-time equivalents for the two water crews, as well as adding the new water well at $2.25 million. The water distribution, the majority of that increase is related to the ground storage water tank, ground storage tank and water plant at $3.85 million. And then we look at the major budget items. So everything on this page represents nearly 81% of the total expenditures for the water fund. You've got nearly $988,000 for current existing employees. We're adding two, or six new employees for the two water crews of $352,000. Capital items, around $7.1, $7.2 million. As I mentioned, we've got completion of the current water well. We've got water well number nine coming on. We've got the ground storage water plant that we need to have done, the backhoe, the skid stir, one-third of the cost of a signboard, which we had to defer to this year for that item, because we needed to use the funds for, we had that program for last year for traffic control devices. We got the grant match for the CDVG MIT mod, emergency generators of $187,000. And then debt service payments is around $1.2 million. And then reimbursement, so for all your utility funds, you're going to have reimbursement to the general fund for cost, and you're going to have a pilot. So your pilot is payment and lieu of tax. It's like a franchise. So all of our electric company, all of your utility companies pay a franchise fee to the city. So your electric companies, gas companies, telecommunications companies, all of those pay utility franchise fees. Well, the city's not, they also have to do that if they have those utilities. And so since we have gas, sewer, and water, we have to pay the general fund for those as well. And so that's what the pilot amount is. It's based on your gross revenue. And then you've got reimbursement to the general fund for cost. And so those are services that all of the departments that are in the general fund, finance, city manager's office, city secretary's office, our development services, IT, those departments all provide services to the, on the utility side. So finance, they've got the utility billing clerks out there. So those type things, they provide services, and so those funds have to reimburse to the general fund to cover those costs. And so that's around $1 million from the water fund. We've got around $418,000 budgeted for water well and maintenance. Our meters, purchasing meters are around $136,000. Then we've got electricity to run the water system is around $136,000. Fire hydrant maintenance program, $100,000. And then capital lease payments, and those are lease payments for enterprise, as well as any of our short-term leases is $278,000. And then we also, we have to budget depreciation, so that's $500,000. So we get to our water fund summary and fund balance. So we're projecting 173 number of days excess at the end of next year. Last year, we projected 156. So again, the idea is our rate should be covering, start covering those costs, and we should be able to start slowly building those number of days enough to represent paying for your utility debt payments and your CIP projects, and have enough fund balance to cover those. When you look at the actual here, number 627, that's based on the audited numbers. We had budgeted that to be 462 days, and so we came in really good. But again, these are moving targets because you're, on your expenditure side, in the water fund, we actually had the water well and the water tower project going. We're not finished with that. And so since you're not finished with it, it moves from your, moves from one year to the next. So when you look at expenditures here, we'd budgeted 10 million, but there are only six. Well, that, that means the difference between that moves over to this proposed budget. So that's why your, your number of days is going to keep bouncing around until you get these projects finished. Natural gas, so natural gas, biggest increase here is on your gas sales, around 13.7%, but we're only increasing the gas rates 10.5%. The average home using six MCFs, which is how gas is charged per month, would see an increase of $4.46 per month. On the expenditure side, again, there's actually been a decrease. That's because we completed the Hollister Gas Regulator Station, and the majority of the Pecan Lakes gas loop system will be completed. But we did add additional $80,000 to complete the gas loop system in the proposed budget, as well as $60,000 to rehab three gas regulators for next year. So this slide represents nearly 98%, nearly all of your, your gas expenditures here. $320,000 for personnel. Gas purchases, so we purchased gas from a wholesaler, and so we pass 100% of that cost on to our customers, our residents, our businesses, and that represents around $3.7 million of cost to us. We transfer around $122,000 to the debt service fund to pay for that gas loop system that we borrowed some money for last year. The reimbursement for general fund costs is around $816,000. The pilot is around $573,000. Budgeted depreciation, $150,000. Your gas meters and regulators, we purchased for, for those is $100,000. Your capital lease is for enterprise, and again, for any short-term lease, but majority for enterprises, $80,000. Maintenance on the gas regulator is $70,000. As I mentioned earlier, trying to complete the gas loop system is $7,000, and they're also paying one-third of the cost of the message signboard. So where do we stand summary and fund balance-wise? Actual, per the audit, was 108 days. We had estimated to be 78 days, and then we're projecting next year to be at 62 number of days excess. And last year, we were at seven days. So again, increasing the rates was significant enough. In addition to that, also want to remind you that next year, those rates include a industrial partner paying 100% of the rates, what they, what they should be paying as other, as other industrial partners are paying. So that, that's all factored in. So that's part of the reason why we went from seven days to 62 days. On the wastewater fund, again, the increase there is related to the sewer rate increase of 6.7%. An average home using 3,000 gallons for the winter average would see an increase of $3.24 per month. On expenditures, the sewer collection, there's quite a bit of small items that makes up that, that large increase. $125,000 is dredging the racetrack. I can, if you want to know what the racetrack is, you can get with John after the meeting and explain to you what that, I think most of y'all might know what the racetrack is. $50,000 to rehab the restrooms out at the wastewater treatment plant. $25,000 to add chlorine scales. We're going to do some smoke testing on the west side of Navasoda for $60,000. We're going to replace the manhole covers for $50,000. We're going to add weather coverings to at least two lift stations for $30,000. And what I consider the most important item is we're going to spend $25,000 to do a Cedar Creek stabilization study. So if you take a look in Google Maps at the wastewater treatment plant, of the outflow from the wastewater treatment plant into the Cedar Creek, you'll notice significant erosion happening out there. And so we need to study that and figure out what's a plan to correct that. It cannot continue to happen, or we're going to lose the wastewater treatment plant, it's just going to fall into the creek. And so spending $25,000 to study to find out what that needs to be is something that I think is very, very important, and that's part of that cost as well. When you look at the major expenditures, this is 95% of your cost. $377,000 is for personnel. Transferring to the debt service is around $447,000. Reimbursement to the general fund for costs is $467,000. Maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, $375,000. The sewer main maintenance and liftsake masses is around $145,000, or $245,000 total. And then we've got depreciation, $240,000. The pilot for the wastewater, wastewater fund is $264,000. Maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, $105,000. Capital leases, $93,000. Electricity's $105,000. And then we've added some grant match funds for CDVG. So CDVG's got some MIT mod funds that are out there available for emergency generators, and so this is the match portion of that. And when we get to the grants, again, the last slide, we'll talk about some of those CIP projects that are in the grants to cover this. But where were we for wastewater treatment plant last year? We had projected, were projected at 201 here. We were at 85 days. So again, increase there, and then 134, $134 number of days excess. We had 108 last year. So again, those rates are doing what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to start building back that number of days of excess to increase our fund balance. We look at rate increases, I mentioned those, so I want to make sure I put all those on one slide. So $4.92 for average water user for 6,000 gallons per month. Natural gas, increase of $4.46 for an average user of six MCFs. And using the winter average for 3,000 gallon wastewater would be $3.24. So your total utility bill for those type of users would increase from $150.38 to $163, which is an increase of $12, $12.62, or an average of 8.4% for that month. Other funds, again, we'll go through a bunch of, all these funds in detail, but also just wanted to make attention that the board of firemen's, we're planning to, and we're probably bringing this to you this year, I think we've only got one retiree that's in this, and ideally try to close that out, and so we'll be coming to you with a recommendation to close out the Board of Fireman Service Fund. And then the, the grants, as I mentioned, expenditure for 7.7 million, and so I want to be sure to bring that to you, and that's the last slide. Any questions about the summary before we get into departments?
And just so everybody knows here, we've had all this information for a few days, so we have, it's not all...
Yeah, so this information is provided to y'all a week, week and a half in advance, and we also placed it on our website and pushed it out via our Facebook page. And so hopefully residents had a chance to take a look at this. So as we move into general government, so general government, we have non-departmental. Non-departmental is ideal where we program our debt payments and any consideration for salary increases. And so we are foregoing the 2020 CO debt payments for '24 and '25, and it's around $124,000. And so our fund balance in the, in the debt service fund was over a half a million dollars. It doesn't really need to be half a million dollars, because you're bringing money in to make the debt payments, and if you're bringing money in to make the debt payments, it should be an in and out, so there shouldn't be a huge balance there. And so ideally, we're pulling down from that, and that is one of the ways we're able to provide some funds for adding the additional $100,000 for our street maintenance program. And then the personnel, again, the 249 is for up to 4% on general fund full-time employees. Thank you just to the supplemental requests. As I just mentioned, supplemental requests, we considered 4% merit increases, which includes benefits, and we also considered part of the strategic plan was to increase TMRS participation from 5% to 6%, as well as retirement service years from a 25-year city to a 20-year city that was $273,256. We were not able to do that, and so only proposing funding the merit increases. Under administration, so administration has myself, the assistant city manager, Michelle, the executive admin assistant, and our city secretary. So a total of four FTEs. And so kind of point out a decrease in capital outlay. So if you remember, this $260-something thousand represented in our current budget was for the purchasing of the three UP properties and staff, based on direction from council and some of the issues that we've had with, and I guess all the strings that are attached to that, staff's not, is not going to move forward with that. That is the proposal and the amount of expenses that that would, it's going to be way more than $263,000. That was just to purchase the property. The strings cost a lot more than the property. And then over here for $50,000 in capital outlay, that's the budget amount that we need for putting up the fencing for the NTA property and Navasoda Theater Alliance property that we just purchased this current year. Major budget items, we budgeted around $5,000 for professional fees to help do the annual filing for the TERS, as well as you'll be having a public improvement district item come before you soon related to the development on the east side of town. And so Hawes Hill Group is helping out with that, and so that's a $5,000 cost. Records destruction, which is shredding. So city secretary's office is in charge of records management, and so $2,500 is in there for, for that. We got professional development, decreased some, so we're spending $11,490 for that. And then the lease of the Neil Martinson property for City Hall employees, it was $200 a month, and so it's $2,400. And based on P&amp;Z's recommendation for that, even though they tabled it, the discussion is that it's going to be on a, I think, an annual basis is the way that they're looking at. So as, as that conditional use permit comes up, our agreement with, with the property owner would come up too. So it's not a, it's not a two, three-year agreement. It's a one-year with possible renewals based on P&amp;Z, whatever P&amp;Z approves at that time. And then as I just mentioned, the fencing for the parking lot, $50,000. City council, so this is your budget I budgeted for you. Actually, I met with you and asked for any items that you might have. So again, there is a decrease, and the decrease has to do with your 380 agreement. So if you, if you do 380 agreements, those 380 agreements show up in your budget. There was a large 380 agreement that was paid out this year to PA Smith for their actual parking lot that they did, so that's why there's a decrease here. When you look at your major budget items, staff did increase the Grimes County Health from $7,000 to $8,000. We increased it by 1,000. We got scanning of the minute books. Again, those minute books are from the old, I don't even know how far back we're going. Do you know, Suzy, now?
1,800 and something.
Yeah, yeah, so we got $10,000 in for that. Of course, we've got to pay Kerry, and, and just so you'll know that, that includes the increase, the billable amount increases in October, so that includes that billable amount. And unfortunately, we still have the CCN legal issues, and so we budgeted $20,000 for that. We've got ordinance codifications for $88, $100. Election, $6,000. And the third pad site for the 380 agreement out related to Starbucks, so Starbucks, it was, the first pad site was Jack in the Box, and then we got, yeah, and then Starbucks. And then we've got, this is the, the third one. And then we've got the 380 agreement that you just approved related to Con Grove, $41,000. Again, we don't know if that will be this year, but we want to put it in there for this coming year for that payment.
Jason, also, the professional fees went down due to the charter election. We're done with all of that, so that was a major decrease.
Yeah, so no more charter election. It's only done. Last one was what, 2003?
'07.
Yeah, 2007, so. Next budget municipal court, there's not much here, so unless the judge wants to get up and say anything, it's, it's, it's flat. It actually decreased a little bit. They don't expect as many jury trials. They did have a jury trial today, so if you saw a lot of cards out here this morning, we did actually have a jury trial. Kerry and his bunch were here to take care of the jury trial.
You have a bunch?
We have a bunch. It's only three of us. Joey came today and prosecuted the case. I'm doing some training, but you'll just be charged for one attorney, we're not charging for two.
Pretty clear about that.
Did some training today, and he, he was successful, and justice was done, and there were three convictions in the cases, so.
It was good, it was great. Let Kristen come do her three sides.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just going through the human resources budget real quick.
Jason mentioned earlier that we did reclassify the utility billing manager to an HR generalist, generalist position. Earlier this year, we reached out to all of our directors to try to better understand what needs they have from the HR department and how we can better support them, current staff, and then, um, prospective employees as well. And so we came up of, like, with a list of items that we would like to see from the HR department. With that, kind of realized there's, uh, a big gap that we cannot really manage all of that with one person, and so our idea is to reclassify that. You'd be manager position to an HR generalist, um, to provide more support for the HR department and hopefully provide better internal customer service and also, uh, better recruitment opportunities as well. So the major items that are covered under the HR budget, uh, this year we implemented a TrackStar Performance Management System to conduct employee evaluations on an annual basis. That's, uh, ten thousand dollars a year. Time Clock Plus Software is under the HR department. This is our, um, payroll time management system that we use for the city, which is fifty-three hundred. Third-party benefits consultant, Hub International, is forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. That also includes a new online benefits management system that we're moving to for our employees to better streamline that effort. Leadership training of five thousand dollars because we, um, placed an emphasis on trying to better develop our current leaders and then also our future leaders in the organization. Employee events, which would include Public Service Recognition Week. Um, for instance, in Evert this week, we're trying to, uh, appreciate, show appreciation for our public works employees that are out working in the heat every day. So we're doing snow cones and things like that for them, so it's things that we can do throughout the year to show appreciation for employees. Uh, employee service awards of a thousand, um, new employee jackets. Every new employee gets a jacket with the city seal on it, uh, for a logo, which is twenty-five hundred dollars. Drug testing, we increased a little bit to five thousand. We're trying to do, uh, more streamlining of how we do our random drug testing and also potentially improve the process for new employees as well. Help wanted advertising primarily through the examiner and other online methods at four thousand. Uh, our Christmas party that we have every year, an employee award ceremony, is eighty-one seventy-five. And then in addition to that, uh, Jason mentioned earlier, we are increasing the basic life insurance that is provided for employees by the city from thirty thousand to fifty thousand, which came at a little over four, uh, four thousand dollar increase. And then also, um, we're launching a new online training system for employees that has a variety of different safety topics that we can, um, require all of our employees to complete. It can go through, uh, topics such as harassment and harassment in the workplace, bullying, and so we think it'll be a really good tool to try to, uh, promote some different training for our employees. So that, I believe, oh, the supplemental request, we did have one supplemental request in HR, and it's for a human resources information system. Basically, this is a, a better applicant tracking tool, um, that will allow the full process of recruitment, applications, uh, scheduling interviews, submitting all the required documentation online to be in one system. Right now, it is a little antiquated, and it's not very user-friendly, and we want to try to streamline that effort. Um, so that is what this HR, it's called an HRIS system is for. Do y'all have any questions on the HR budget?
Is that system, is that a one-time?
Uh, the, the first year, I think annually, it's roughly six to seven thousand. So the ninety-nine hundred is, does include a one-time setup fee for the first year. Um, we have looked at several different systems. We haven't made a, a hundred percent decision on which one we are going to go with, but this was, we went with the one that was the most expensive, just in case that's the one we chose to go with. But most of them...
And this system here, this is all trying to marry it all together, right?
Right, I mean, we, we have people who are still printing, scanning application. It's, there's a lot of inefficiencies in our current process that I think that this will help, um, to remedy. Any other questions?
Hello. As you can see, um, just at a glance, our end-of-year estimate is pretty close in line with what we're proposing for next year for financial services. Um, I just wanted to highlight, uh, the difference between our end-of-year estimates for FY twenty-four and, um, in our budgeted amount. So on personnel, we're actually about three percent, we're estimating to be about three percent under what we had budgeted. Um, materials and supplies, uh, we exceeded that by, uh, by a bit, um, and that had to do with, with tools and other items and equipment that were purchased for our meter technician. We had not previously budgeted for that. Um, maintenance and services, uh, the majority of that is due to credit card processing fees, so that, um, that amount was almost double what we had planned. Um, a lot more people were paying with credit cards in the, in the last fiscal year than they had in previous years. Uh, professional fees, our, our audit actually came in twenty-four thousand under budget for FY twenty-four. And lastly, uh, in the miscellaneous category, we, uh, we will have fifty-six hundred in savings just because we didn't advertise for any grants in FY twenty-four.
A question here. Um, on the credit card fee, uh, have you, uh, looked into, uh, passing the fees on to the customer if they decide to use a credit card?
Yes. Yeah, um, so I need to work with our credit card processors about that. Right now, one of the things that we're doing is testing another company that, um, that does have lower fees. Um, it was in the, the terminal located in the permits desk. They estimated savings of about eight hundred dollars a month. So we are making, we're testing it to see that it's going to be efficient for our staff and that it's not going to cause too many issues. And then the next step is going to be, um, looking at our utility billing, um, here in person. And the last layer, um, is going to be to do it where it's connected with the online payment site, municipal online payments. Um, so that's one of the solutions, and we're going to see, explore to see if there's a way that we can pass on that fee to them. Right now, we can pass on the, um, the, the fee, the insight fee that for, that Tyler Technologies, um, charges for, for hosting the site. So every time that, you know, a regular resident goes and pays online, they pay that two dollars, but they're not paying for the processing fees.
The reason I ask is, I know if we go up to the county and register a V-Hip group and we use a credit card, they're going to charge us a credit card fee.
Right, yeah, so we're, we're going to be working with our credit card processor to do that.
So it gets back, so it does get back to a question, if, if we get on another slide here, when we talk about major budget items, we spend around a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars currently right now on credit card fees for customers to pay by credit card. So if, if that's the wish of council, we, we can start looking at, um, if it's something that we want to pass on, that's definitely something we can, can start looking at, if that's the wish of council.
Yeah, our ordinance allows us to pass on up to five percent.
I think it's worth while, just, just shopping the, the credit card periodically because those rates do change. There's a difference in those companies.
We can do that and then come back with you and kind of give you an idea of what that new, what it's looking like with, with the new cards, but, uh, but you all, you will, definitely, you will continue having that two-dollar fee, um, and then the city is, is, um, basically, um, subsidizing the, the payments, if you want to make it by credit card. But we, we can try to get the, the fees down lower, uh, but if we can't do, if we can't go to too much lower than the hundred and fifty that we're doing now, uh, then it's something we can bring back to you about passing those on to the...
Do they do exceptions between credit cards and debit cards?
The, no, I mean, they categorize it different on the statements, but it, the same fees, yeah, it's, it's more based on the, the vendor, so Visa, MasterCard, Amex.
You said that you had an increase because of the meters? Does meters fall under financial services?
No, no, it's supplies like small tools, uh, and other things that they needed, like...
So the meter, so the meter technician that we had, um, under there for the full year, um, had supplies going out, tools, uh, things related to the, the radio they need fixing, those type of things. So they had additional costs that wasn't planned for.
Yeah, since that position was, was still under financial services, um, we had to absorb those costs. Okay. And then, um, our staff, uh, just as Mr. Weeks and Ms. Goethe stated, the utility billing manager position is, um, being, being moved over and becoming an HR generalist position. The meter technician position moved to public works, and, um, in this fiscal year, we also moved the, elevated the grants coordinator position and made it an accounting manager role. So the big items for financial services, it's our, our payment kiosk, credit card fees, um, our audit, um, our debt book software, which is the, the software that we use to keep up with our leases and our internet-based technology contracts. HDL Companies, they do the sales tax consulting, uh, Grimes County Appraisal District, uh, the appraisals and the tax collection fees, professional development and advertising for, for grants that we'll be applying to.
And I will let you know, Council, um, the appraisal district, uh, fees are right at a hundred and one thousand dollars. Um, we have end-of-year estimate at eighty-nine thousand, so that's, um, about a fourteen percent increase, just FY.
I have another question for you.
Hmm?
Because of all the switches and where employees took funding from, how do we go back ten years, so let's say, let's move to two thousand and thirty-four? How do we look back and be able to compare where we were with where we're projecting in twenty thirty-four with all of the changes with staffing, you know, back and forth? I don't, just out of curiosity.
So I have a spreadsheet, and all I do is add an extra column every year. So I went back, um, I can't remember how far I went, I went back. Staffing, I've only been able to track since I've been here, so there is a, for expenditures, it goes back, I think it went back ten years, uh, but for staffing, it goes back to since I started. So as you, each year we add, you'll have that information, so whoever, whoever's here in twenty thirty-four, it's not going to be me, but twenty thirty-four, uh, is going to, uh, be able to pull that up and see what staffing was back then and, and find out the notes.
Going to ten years from now.
I know.
What did you say?
I'll be working from home.
Say, Mayor, but, uh, I, I do have a, one of, uh, quick questions.
Yes, sir.
On court fines and, and fees, are they, uh, allowed to be paid by credit card also?
Yes, in person, but not like, um, not like an online portal. That's not, we haven't executed anything like that yet.
Okay, so actually, if the court fees and fines are allowed to pay by credit card, the city is eating that percentage because the state is not giving us a discount on it, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that's probably true. We can definitely check on it, Council member, but I'm pretty sure that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mike Myers, Chief of Police.
Here comes the chief.
Just our budget from end of the year and proposed. This is our staffing right now, uh, currently thirty-seven positions in Police Department. Obviously, in a minute, you'll see the ammo control has two. Uh, currently, just so you know, we do have just two openings throughout the, both departments together, and we had four, four applicants that went through the interview board, so it's a possibility we can be filled up pretty soon.
Been a long time.
Yes. Uh, major budget items, obviously the Treats on the Streets and National Night Out, um, which Navisota PD hosts. Blue Santa, we're going to budget around that. We're going to still maintain the hundred and twenty-some-odd kids that, uh, we purchased gifts for. Uh, the server, a lot of the things are now moving. Not only we have servers at the PD, but a lot of the cloud stuff, so, uh, body cameras, in-car videos. Eight bulletproof vests, those are the day-to-day vests the officers wear. Uh, they do expire every five years, so we try to do a rotation on vest. Uh, maintenance, the cars are driven, does their office, so that's oil, tires, and, uh, as luckily, a lot of the vehicles that we put in the shops this past year were under warranty, and we're working on that to help out. Clothing, same as the officers, is the new uniforms they've, uh, received three years ago, uh, as they wear them constantly, they have three sets of uniforms, um, and they're three years old, so we're going to slowly rotate out pants and shirts. Our radio tower lease, that was a lease that, uh, or the tower off of County Road Four Twenty Courtney Road that we were leasing, that, uh, BB Wax was able to get the grants, put our, uh, all of our equipment on for our radios. We were always jumping off the radio towers in Washington County and in Milliken, and now we, with the lease, tower lease, the equipment is up and we are operating off of that currently, about two months now, Chief Kokoski, two months. So it improved our radio signal tremendously. We can now, uh, communicate inside buildings, especially like the schools and so forth, which also helps with the third payment on the Motorola radios. Three years ago, we purchased all new radios. Ours were well, well outdated. Uh, the nine-one-one services, we have to pay to have nine-one-one. Um, it fluctuates by usage, so that's our estimate. Uh, dispatch consoles, spoke about those, those are back from the eighties, and, uh, we're down to only operating, hopefully, on just one right now. We usually have two, and we're actually borrowing another one that went out as well, so we're down to one right now. And then our, the last enterprise is all of our patrol vehicles.
Are those on-street cameras, uh, that we were looking at, are they included in this or were they in this year's?
Uh, no, they're not included in this. Actually, I got the finalized quote and it is in his email. As he was speaking, I emailed it to the city manager, but we didn't include those on this year's. We actually, so just to get off real quick on those cameras, the, uh, company we're looking at is giving us a ninety-day trial period to test them out, and we picked the locations. They've already been down here. They're looking at, uh, installing and everything, so they're going to let us try them out for ninety days. Uh, the request, the additional traffic enforcement officer, so currently, we did get one last year with the, as the staffing was, um, he was not put into full-time duty until July first, and works a four-day shift out of the week. I got some stats just real quick, since July first, and you got to think he is, apparently, he's sick, so he's off three days so far, but he's made a hundred and twenty-two traffic stops. And another duty of the traffic officer is they handle the car crashes, and he's made, um, fifteen crashes, so he took over the crash scene and let the patrol officers go back to handling their calls. And out of that, five arrests, so that's just the beginning of it, the first month and twelve days. It's, uh, pretty good, which, over, almost fifty citations. He's, uh, the traffic officer is going to be put in place at, school started today, and they're going to focus on the school zones and so forth. This additional one is going to focus more into, uh, CMV traffic stops and handling the truck route a lot more, where we can push the other traffic officer to school zones and in the neighborhoods, and this one's going to focus in more downtown, our, all of our violations. And then the other request is the consoles again.
Just out of curiosity, I, I looked it up today. It doesn't look like they're actual consoles anymore. It's more like a computer software that you're going to buy, kind of, right?
Basically, just a, uh, yeah, screen.
Yeah.
It's all built in, it's a computer screen. It's, it, now they're all, all in one package. So you get the touchscreen and all that, and everything's built there. As of right now, so we get a pursuit from another agency, and they're on their channel. We, the dispatcher would have to call somebody or manually, disman- Disman the station, run down the hallway, turn the knob to their channel, run back in there and listen in and communicate with our guys. Now it's all touchscreen and then they can join, um, all the agencies that are in it, you can push them all down to one channel, so it's all touchscreen.
It looks pretty cool.
No more, yeah, as we are right now, having to go back and forth, sir.
That's just hardware or is that?
Which, oh, no, that's everything, that is going to be the two consoles, that includes training, that's a five-year warranty. Uh, installation, that's out the door. I spoke with them today and they said luckily, this is not like the radios, it's six to eight weeks. When we say yes, that everything will be here and they can start and it's two or three days worth of training for our dispatchers, cause it's totally new system.
And that's the loan through USDA?
No, that's, this, this, we're going through a different loan service, it's not USDA.
Yeah, no grant on this one.
Back to Barney's, uh, a question about the cameras, if we was to get the cameras, how would they be used?
So the cameras that we were looking at originally were for, uh, to help assist on when the railroad train stopped, right now, somebody calls in, the train stopped. We're trying to figure out which crossings are open in case our department EMS, police are on this side of town, all of our. Now we know, rather than trying to just guestimate, so the cameras can be mounted and dispatch can, it's twenty-four seven, live feed. They can just click on, see the crossings, we're only gonna put them at the major ones, but let's all, Washington and Blackshire, they know all three of those are. Locked and go around, if not, one's open, then we notify everybody on the radio if an emergency happens. You can take this as open, plus then dispatch can monitor how long the train has been there to update Union Pacific or BNSF. Issues with the train, um, they're live, so if we have a big event down here, we know where the traffic is. At, uh, car crashes, it can back up and show us who's at fault.
And what was the cost of those?
So the cost I received a little while ago for the two cameras, which have four lenses on them, so if we put at the major intersection, grab all four. And zoom in and zoom out, it's, uh, roughly twelve thousand dollars, so three of them to cover all three with installation. And all that is right, just under twenty thousand dollars. Everything that we have pretty much has an annual license and this license is, uh, actually, it's a one-time fee and then we just do a little, it's like a hundred and twenty dollars. A camera maintenance annually, once we purchase them, cause we're actually purchasing, we have the camera and I think it's a seven-year. Warranty on these cameras, where we can call them and they work on them.
Do the railroads have any kind of internal systems that detect? When something's at a certain part of the rail or?
They do, but.
Probably proprietary.
Yes, we, I'll let you tell.
So now we understand why they stop here, there is a sensor and it is north of the river, so when they cross. The river into Navasota prior to that, hits the sensor, the trains are so long, they're, they're pushing what, two, two and a half miles long now. Any one of those carts is gonna hit that sensor, there's a fault, by the time the train slows down, they're here and they have to stop, shut down. Manually get out, walk the entire track, find out where the issue is and you know, they're, they're on a certain time limit, so if they hit that hour, they gotta sit there, wait for the next crew. But that is, we found out finally, that is our major issue, the southbound trains hit the sensor, which is a couple miles north. By the time they slow down, they're inside the city limits, covering our tracks up, our crossings.
Didn't we, wasn't there a guy that was wanting to rent the water tower that said he would put in cameras? Do you put in a camera, cause he was gonna have the wifi?
So his thing was smoke detection or something, wasn't actual camera, I think.
No, he said, he said pointing it to the railroad track, I mean, as part of his reason.
Yeah, but I don't know how he would reach, but you know.
We looked at some farther away cameras such as that and these, the cameras we're looking at were, have four angles, so you can put it right downtown.
I'm sorry, he was renting the, he was going to provide internet service to the city and therefore he would have that built in. And there apparently were two people, I don't know if that has any relation to this, but.
Best part on these, these cameras, since they, they come with a server as well, so you put the footage and it's under CGIS compliance. Allowing law enforcement, if there's anything on that end, so that, that's the company that we're looking at, that is, everything we have has to be under a CGIS contract.
Hey Jason, I highly think we ought to add this to this year's budget.
If nothing else, at least consider it as a budget amendment, depending on the ninety-day trial as to how it.
We were looking at a lot, and that first one we looked at was the train cameras and they were, they threw a lot of smoke and said it was going to be free. And then when they hit us back with a sixteen thousand dollar bill, we, we backed out of that one and then we, we've had three or four companies come in here and do live demonstrations with us. And after looking at everything, IT and parks, everybody was in here, so maybe expand throughout the city as, check out these cameras. Eventually parks or the wastewater treatment, anybody needs cameras, this would be a good company.
There's no testing going on right now, Jason?
No, sir.
Not yet.
They, they finally sent us everything today and they, they looked at the locations to see where there's power and, uh, what type of provider for the cell. Cell or, uh, the wi, fiber. So once we say yes, they're, the, they'll set it up with their installers and that's, it's all free on that end and then we can decide after the trial period.
Because probably, uh, when this is set up, even Saint Joseph's can use this also, if they're coming from the hospital and this crossing is closed.
Yeah, dispatch, usually obviously people are gonna call and dispatch, there's a train there, they can, it, they can have, we already have a TV for dispatch to monitor. That they can see this crossings, so when they page out, fire EMS, be advised, um, you need to go to this location. This crossing, this crossings, you're gonna have to take this route and that's, that was the whole goal, that's why we send officers out, see how long it is. This will eliminate officers having to constantly check, crossing is still blocked, crossing is still blocked and they're still taking their call, so. Fire and EMS get paged out from their stations, they know directly which route to take to get there fastest. So this is the animal control side. Bit of change, obviously things do go up, uh, the vet bills, it's constant, um. We're still, it was brought up actually today in court, uh, we are a no-kill shelter, so we keep everything. Unless it is an actual deathly animal that comes in that they, the vet agrees with, put down. Vaccinations, microchipping, pretty much the spay, the neuter have, the pricing has gone up, veterinary services, we get a lot of animals. Somebody brings in an animal, hey, I found this at the gas station, I mean, did they bring it from somewhere else? Then is it theirs and all that, and in our responsibility, we do take care of it and we go ahead and do the, uh, vet bills on that. And they have the vehicle, currently, we do have the two animal control officers, one is still out from the injuries from the dog attack. That should be coming back really soon and then the second animal controller started, I think she's in three weeks so far, she'll be at the next council meeting, meet and greet. Nothing on this funding because the HVAC system, I saw a post the other day saying how hot it is, it is hot, that is shelters, I don't know. Before my time, over twenty years old, I guess.
Way older than that, man.
I have no clue, I know it's older than, I've been here, so, uh, think about the insulation, the, I know the installer of the AC and he told me it was well over twenty years old. Keeping up with the heat nowadays, so we did find a mini-split system that's almost a two-ton and it's gonna be less than five hundred dollars. And I think I can get it installed as a donation from an installer, so that's, will significantly help out the AC issues in there.
A call to the public, you could get lots of donations.
We have a little bit of excess money from this one that we put in as end of year we would spend and that is how, so it took away the need. I'm pretty sure the HVAC system for that, no insulation would be a lot higher than eight thousand dollars, but, um, it's got a three-ton unit. We put a window unit in there and it's still with the hundred-degree heat's not holding up, so. Think we got a solution on that end, that's a lot cheaper that we can go with.
Good evening. Uh, so going through the fire department budget here, um, if you look at the, I guess I gotta click this thing. So, uh, end of year estimate and, uh, the proposed budget, there's a little over a million-dollar difference here. And as you, as we go through this, you'll see, uh, a lot of this is gonna be tied to the supplements. Staffing, not much changing here, we're gonna gain a half, a half of an assistant chief, is what we're hoping for. Major budget items, uh, just like the police department, we have our third-year payment on the Motorola, on, when we replaced all the radios. Uh, three years ago, uh, of course, maintenance on those fire trucks and the equipment that we carry is not cheap, so. That's our, what we annually project it's gonna cost to get that. Uh, every year we have to, uh, recertify a lot of our equipment, ladders, hoses, air packs. Five sets of gear, that's just kind of a rotation, uh, as gear wears out or actually expires after ten years. So that just keeps us on a rotation and keeps our gear going. Previous communications, it's, it's, we've replaced, we still have volunteers, they carry pagers, we have to replace those pagers as they wear out. Uh, batteries for them, batteries for radios, uh, in our active nine-one-one contract. Wellness and fitness, we actually just completed that this past Friday, it's our, uh, we have a company that comes in. And assesses all of our staff for fit for duty, um, medically and physically. Accident policy for the fire, uh, for volunteers. And Engine eighty, Engine eighty-one that we just took into service last year, that's its annual payment, I think it's set up on a seven-year payment. And then enterprise lease is for our grass truck, the chassis for the grass truck and a proposed, uh, utility truck for this coming year. Supplementals, okay, here we go, uh, so for the upcoming budget, we're proposing this part, a part-time assistant chief. Uh, design phase of the fire station, uh, that will be going in behind Circle T there, uh, on Spur five fifteen. F-two-fifty crew cab utility truck with, uh, bed cover, it's more like a camper shell and a slide-out for it, radios. Uh, air packs that we currently have are over fifteen years old, uh, the cost to repair them are starting to get more than what the air packs are worth. So our plan is to, over the next three years, uh, replace five at a time at about a cost of about forty thousand dollars. So eight thousand apiece. And then the last item here that you see is the SHARP, uh, utility vehicle and what this is. It is a true all-terrain vehicle, uh, for land search and rescue as well as an amphibious vehicle. Lupe has a, uh, video that he can pull up, so you can kinda get an idea of what we're talking about. The total price tag on this vehicle is around a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, we're looking to do a payment of around forty-six thousand, I believe. Annually and as, uh, Mr. Weeks said, start that payment this coming year as opposed to waiting off a year.
Were we trying to also get some help from the county on that?
Why don't you get the video first and then I'll talk to you.
Okay.
As I was playing, uh, over the last few years, I think, we've pulled the numbers, we've responded to, just in, talking about the water rescues. Uh, around forty-five to fifty water rescue events, not all of those are suitable for, for boats. Either due to the terrain, the water gets deep, then it gets shallow and you're back and forth between the two. Boy, the water's just not quite deep enough to put the boat in and this will, this takes that place.
And this is just old, dry land in, in world.
They can go anywhere. This thing operates like a skid steer or bobcat, uh, actually basically has the same motor in it as well. Uh, it will take some special training to operate it, we did test it out, uh, about a month ago, I guess it was. Uh, they brought it down, we took it down to Highway six, uh, the Navasota River. And up and down the embankments, in to the water, out, uh, in some tight places. Uh, those tires that are on there, they will, the driver can control the air in those tires. Depending on the terrain, uh, can deflate them and, and re-inflate them. Uh, the tires are rugged enough that to flatten one, it would take a four-by-four hole in one of them to actually flatten it. The tires when, uh, and I know Mr. Harris, this doesn't get you a tire job there, but the, uh, windows. So if it punctures through like rebar, uh, or a.
Tree.
Tree or something like that, it will reseal itself and keeps going.
You drive that thing?
They wouldn't let us drive it.
Mitch Cole, Mitch Cole got a second, he got, he got to drive it for a little bit, they didn't let him take it down into the water, down in the embankments. It, it is, uh, it will, it's gonna take some time for us to get used to, it's controlled.
With a joystick.
Anybody else in this, in our region have one of these?
Be the first.
So, uh, they are, they were a foreign company, um, and understanding that there was a need in the United States. Understanding, um, especially Texas purchasing laws, one of the things that they need to do is establish a Texas business here and so they did. They opened up a business in, uh, an outlet in Houston, uh, and so they, they are reaching out. Again, they were at the emergency management, um, conference, uh, they're, they're very new to, uh, the United States. And so they're, they, they know about TML and they're trying to come to the TML conference to actually be able to present there and, you know, they're. Uh, they did use it on, uh, when Burl came through, they were able to utilize the vehicle, uh, for several rescues. They went out and able to showcase, uh, the unit, I know that, uh, DPS is looking at it, I know Texas Forest Services look. Again, it's not just for water and terrain, it's for any terrain. Uh, one of the things, understanding that a lot of our water rescues happen in the county, uh, and so since that happens, we did reach out. To Grimes County, we haven't reached out to Brazos County yet, reached out to Grimes County, um, did a presentation at their, um, commissioner's court. For the budget presentation, if you remember back then, there were four million dollars deficit, so they really, we really didn't know for sure what they could do. Um, I, I will tell you that the majority of the commissioners were on board on this, they knew that it was a vital piece of equipment that could be used in the county. Uh, and so, um, their final budget that they are looking at for approval, uh, our fire funds are gonna increase by ten thousand. So they are increasing our fire, uh, portion by ten thousand and the library reached out to them for an increase as well. And theirs is increasing by, uh, three thousand five hundred dollars, so we are getting thirteen thousand five hundred dollars more. Um, from the county, which could be contributed to part making payments on this because this wasn't. Number one, we didn't budget for any increases in the, uh, the county's participation, uh, but ideally. Uh, this will be used a lot in the county, uh, as well as here locally, uh, I, I know that we don't consider it in the city. But, uh, the county road that goes out to Elwood, there was three or four, at least three rescues this last year. On that stretch that we weren't able to get a boat or my Jeep in, um, but, um, firefighter, um, Flores was able to walk it in. So, um, and so, uh, in addition to that, this year, if you remember.
Chose deep on it.
Yeah, it was, it was very deep on, um, um, on thirty-ninety, we had to do water rescue on thirty-ninety, there was about a mile stretch. That, uh, they actually had to walk in, so we had our firefighters, we had, uh, Grimes County Sheriff's Office and DPS. Uh, all walked in, uh, to, uh, help out on that, uh, so, um, again, um, understanding. It's a large cost, we want to be able to spread that out, so we ask the county participates, we'll get some county funding as well as, uh, paying that over five years.
But you just said that the county wasn't gonna put anything in on that.
So they're not saying, they're increasing the funding and basically said, you do what you want with the funding.
Right, well, we're asking for more funding on the regular contract and then we. Right, well, we're asking for more funding on the regular contract, and then we, I mean, every year we ask for more and we don't get anything, so-
Yeah, we didn't ask for any more in the fire contract this year.
Okay. I have a question, the, this machine thing, looks like it goes into water. How do you rescue somebody in it? Because you can't, I would guess, you can't open the doors while there's water surrounding it? Water doesn't fill into the-
No, it keeps it, it keeps it above where the opening is.
Okay, on that video, I didn't, specifically was looking for that, didn't see it.
Somebody over transmover boat.
Right, yeah, it, when you open those back, back doors and the way we're having this, we're wanting to set this one up, it's gonna have some seating in it in the back, but it also has a spot for a backboard or a Stokes basket for us to carry if we have an unconscious patient or if we have an injured patient. Again, it's not only used in water rescues, it's land search and rescue as well, like the incident that happened out in Plantersville a couple of years ago with a young child. This thing could have mowed through some, some of that brush and stuff where everybody was trying to walk and cut through and get through.
And you said that Montgomery County does have one of these?
No, no, there's, there's nobody in the state of Texas right now that currently-
Nobody in the state that has one.
Right. There are some possible contracts with the state of Texas for, around the border. Some of the Harris County departments are looking at it as well, but so far, there's not been any purchases in Texas. They have, have them in fire departments up in Oregon, Washington State, there's a few others.
There are private individuals that's purchased them, so these are, you can, you-
You can buy them as a duck blind.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, somebody like you would buy one.
My wife, my wife, my wife would divorce me, but yeah.
If we, if we get the first one, can we set up a deal for some kind of a demo fee or something?
Demo fee, yeah.
Have to, to pay the cost.
They had to set up a business here in the US, right?
It's a, it's a Ukrainian company. When the Ukraine-Russian war started, they had a warehouse in Russia and they had to get that closed and moved out too, and they have a manufacturing facility in Turkey as well.
My only suggestion, be sure that you can get the gearbox and engine serviced by these guys, right?
Right.
That's not a regular transmission in there, I can tell you.
We've done some looking at it, it's actually, most of the stuff we could actually work on ourselves. The one thing that they told us about this particular motor, how it's laid into this, if for some reason the motor gets ruined, we have to replace it, there again, it's like a Bobcat motor, they said they pulled the panels off the side, in less than three hours, in and out, they're done.
It's in a cradle.
Yeah.
So, the, the front, the front portion opens up and the back portion opens up.
Is there a reason that nobody else in the state has one of these?
It's, they're very, they're very, they're very new.
I find it hard to believe that Navasota is gonna be the leading user of this technology. I mean, it would be great if that's the case, I just- Been used in, I mean, of all places. I don't know, it's a lot of money to, when our streets are in terrible situation and that's what folks are concerned with, for me, it's just a lot of, it's a lot of money for something that we might use five times a year.
You had a bunch of calls this year.
Yes.
So, it's, as I said, we financed this over five years, so it's forty-one thousand dollars, forty, forty-six thousand, sorry. For five years, for five years.
You ride in on Fourth of July?
They actually were, they actually were gonna bring it for the Fourth of July parade, but we had it, we had it that week before.
Do they have any plans to have a manufacturing facility in the US?
That I don't know.
I'm gonna look into that and see if Navasota might be able to fulfill their needs. We have, we have rail, we have-
Distribution center.
We have rail access and all that.
We got so much here.
So close. I'm proud of you, Kenny.
Definitely we can reach out.
Jason, one thing I ask that you add to your budget, I do a lot of riding around town, and you've got a big heck of a pothole right behind the fire station there, as you get ready to turn on that side street there.
Jose.
Consider that it. Also one at Gibbs and Church.
That's just the intersection, it's not really a pothole.
If you're able to navigate that pothole with-
I do, I go around it every day.
Down a little wide, hadn't it?
I'm not talking about the, the excavation that was in front of my house.
Yeah. Emergency management, we're gonna absorb this part of the budget into the fire department budget, so that's been zeroed out. Pretty much the only thing that really comes out of this budget anymore is the annual payment for the weather bug, and that's around seventeen hundred bucks, I believe, so.
Now, where does the, where does that fee that the citizens, was it two bucks?
A dollar for the parks, dollar for-
Yes, that's not in this, that's not in this.
Yeah, that's not part of the-
Where, is that just general, is that, goes general fund? Have that broken out anywhere?
No, sir, I do not.
You do not, okay.
Is there a reason why? Because I wrote the same note down.
So, so back in the days, prior to me here, it's never been tracked and the auditors have never tracked it, so that's something that Parks and Fire are gonna start doing this year, is start tracking that better, so we can actually know the, the true numbers of it.
So, I'm just asking a question.
Just supplemental revenue is kind of what it is.
Yeah, it's going, it goes into general revenue, correct.
I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, that's-
So, you have, in unassigned fund balance, it's being accounted for in that amount. It goes into, when you, when we talked about the total amount of revenues, whatever that amount was a while back, it's part of that amount.
And you just budget it based on the prior year, I guess?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So, staff's gonna set it up and pull that out on a regular basis into its own account and, and fund.
So, for the future, we'll kind of have a better idea of how much those dollars are.
Yes, sir.
If you remember, the fire department, we did use those funds two different times, once when we replaced our supply hose, went to the five, five-inch supply hose, which was around forty, a little over forty thousand, and then the last time was when we changed from the hydraulic to the E tools, the battery-powered vehicle extrication tools, and I don't, that was probably closer to sixty thousand, somewhere around in there, and that was, was that prior to you?
It was right when I came here, y'all brought it in.
So, you said you used the funds, so-
Yes, we used the funds, so-
So, it used to be tracked?
Well, he, he says he used the funds, but the finance director prior to who we have now didn't track that, so pulling it in and out, there is no record of it, so that's why we're saying we'll start from this fiscal year.
Yeah, 'cause I just, what I'd like to see is just in, with, somewhere within the budget showing that somebody, junkie public could say, oh, that's where my money's going.
Correct.
You know, they could, so they could have some connection to it.
And Chief, can you also, since I alluded to-
Maybe get more people to-
Yeah, to, to put money in. The firemen's, the firemen's fund, so I wanted part of the chief's up to talk about that, 'cause the idea is to come to you within the next fiscal year to conclude that and let him explain how that came about.
So, we have, best I can gauge, we have one person left that is collecting, one retiree that is still collecting on, on that fund. So, one of the things, under the previous administration, we had looked at with the auditors, was, they didn't like how that fund was in there, they actually want us to get rid of it. So, what we're looking at doing is approaching that individual about trying to estimate what-
Buy him out.
Yeah, and pay him out, one lump sum check, and, and then just close that account out.
Is that for?
That was the volunteer, volunteer retirement that the state had initiated, and it was an old program, and the program has been since done away with, there's a new program for that, but this particular one that we were on, I think was closed out close to twenty years ago, and so the city itself, we've been funding it, but like I said, we're down to one retiree left on-
Previously, I guess the state contributed to it.
Yes, there was a, there was a share, a share on that, yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Tiffany Byers, Community Services Director. So, with library, you will see some of our costs increasing, but just like anything else, supply costs have increased as well as our patronage, our county is growing, and lots of people are utilizing the library, which is a great thing. The other thing to keep in mind is that we currently gained provisional accreditation, so what that means is that we have three years to bring our per capita expenses, not budget, but expenses, up to the state's required amount so that that accreditation becomes permanent, so that was something that we were thinking about when we were doing our budget. So, you'll see in the staffing, I, as the library director, became the Community Services Director of Parks and Recreation and Library Services, that happened, happened April first, take that as you will, April Fool's Day, I don't know. And then, when that happened, our library clerk moved up to librarian, and then what we're proposing is a part-time library clerk. As I stated, we are getting busier and busier as the county grows, we are also increasing our programming, we have programs every Monday evening, we have pre-case story time, we're doing mobile story hours at some of the schools locally, trying to get out in the community a little more, so this part-time person will allow us to be able to increase our programming as well as be able to, now that I'm over both departments, I only have one full-time person at the library and one full-time person at the Navasota Center. So, when we have events and things going on, I am running back and forth, when one of them is out, I am tied to that building, that location, so having a part-time person at the library will help alleviate some of that, so that we're not having clothes.
Toward that accreditation too.
As well, yes. And so, summer reading program, we've seen an increase in children, we had thirty-five, actually complete all eight weeks of the program, but on Monday nights for our Monday night programs, we actually had an average of around seventy-five people coming to those. We do provide a meal for the children, just so that they have a meal at least one night a week, and then, so that summer reading program also includes our nature camp, our week-long nature camp as well. We've got forty-two thousand to update the bathrooms, they're currently not ADA compliant, they need to be, so we are hoping to renovate both of those. They also have not been renovated since the library opened in the eighties, they severely need it. And other building repairs, we continue to have issues with AC and different things, so that builds some money in for that as well. Books and magazine costs have increased significantly, so we've increased our budget in that as well. Lease payments on library lighting, which was LED lighting that was put in a few years ago, and then replacement of the roof this year, we have several leaks and they're causing a lot of, a lot of issues. So, as I mentioned, the supplemental request was the replacement of the roof, and that request has been funded. Any questions on library?
We're talking about the replacement of the roof, I understand that one of the things is to actually redesign it and take those dormers out?
Correct, correct, the dormers is where a lot of the leak issues are happening, and that is quite expensive to take that out and redesign it.
Makes sense.
And as I'm sure you're, you're all aware, material costs, you know, have gone up quite a bit.
The lease payment on library lighting, I guess that, that somewhat happened before I was on the-
It's before me.
Can somebody explain that?
So, my understanding was, several years ago, we hired a third party to come in and look at energy savings, so we looked at the, the, the new meter system that we have on the water meters, doing the electronic reads that we have now, and they came in and also lit our lighting system in all of our buildings, and so, the buildings were retrofitted with lighting to save energy and save cost, and so, all of that was packaged in with a bond cell to pay for it, and that's the payment that was related to the library.
But it's a lease?
Well, it is, they considered, it's considered a debt payment, but it, it's a long-term lease payment, but it's still a debt payment. We don't, we're not gonna give them the lights back at the end of the lease.
That, remember, there was my question.
Yeah, we, 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 we own it, correct, we own the lights.
But we, we have the payment forever and ever?
Well, it's not forever and ever, we're getting, we're getting pretty close to being done, I'd have to look back, actually in the book on the lease, but, but it should be getting pretty close.
Are they, is that company sharing information, this is really all, are they sharing information with our cost savings?
So, we, we did an audit last year, and there was something in there that said that if they didn't provide it, there was a clawback and they provided us the detail that said, yes, they, that we did have to save.
I was replacing all the meters and everything.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you can get it, get, get that, go and slide it.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving into Parks and Recreation, we've really been doing an uptick in our programming, Ana's doing a great job getting that going, but we have a lot of, a lot of work to do in our parks, so you'll see professional fees, there's a fee this year for Burdette to do that feasibility, or the park study, and then, and that location was just the Navasota Center, the pool, and Brulee Park. Next year, we're proposing seventy-five thousand to do all of the park studies, our parks have really been neglected over the years, and if we wanna continue to increase especially like league play and competition play and things like that, then we need to invest the money in those, so that'll be a study to look at what we can do to improve those. We currently have a Parks and Recreation Manager, which is Ana, and then we're looking at adding a Parks and Recreation Specialist for next year, and that person will be able to assist her with things like making reservations, which is a constant, that phone is constantly ringing, it's tying her, keeping her from being able to do things like planning programs, marketing things, and then, as we move into these park studies, that's gonna take time, it's gonna be a lot of meetings, it's gonna be finding grants to meet some of those costs, which is a job all in itself, so it's more than what one full-time person can do. She has a lot of great ideas, we've been working together on some things, but a lot of what hinders us is she has one person and then half of me going back and forth, so when we wanna do some of these big events and things, we're just really limited on staffing, so that person will be able to assist her on those things.
Tiffany, I'm, I'm looking at the Parks and Recs, at the expenditures on the maintenance and service, just only have like four thousand dollars added for this upcoming year?
In which one, I'm sorry?
On the maintenance and service.
Yes, so some of the maintenance is in a separate budget, there's a Parks and Facilities Maintenance Budget, so that's separate.
Maintenance Budget has its own budget for maintaining the buildings, and actually has a line item for Navasota Center.
Okay. This may not be the right time to ask this question, if it's not, just let me know, and just let me know when it is, but on the permit swimming pool right now, where do we have that budget at?
So, it's, there is a swimming pool budget?
Okay.
So, some of the major budget items, we have Civic Rec software that we pay a license fee to utilize, that's our reservation software, we're also trying to get people to register for programs through that, so that we can start collecting data, so that's something we've been pushing hard. We have movies in the park licenses, which we do those during the summer, which we have one coming up this Friday, we also do that at Christmas and different times throughout the year, you have to buy a license from Swank in order to show those movies in public places. We have the fishing frenzy program, which we call Family Fishing Day, so that's to stock the tanks, that's to do any, any kind of things we need to do with a pond as far as grasses and things like that, and then, special programming is all of the programs we do throughout the year, like the upcoming Night Under the Stars, the Daddy Daughter Dance, we're looking at working with the extension office and doing some cooking classes, some baking classes, so that's for the, for the year, any kind of program that we're doing. Pretty City Committee, we've got five thousand in it, Pretty City Committee is a group of employees that meet, but we also wanna encourage community participation, that's something that we're working on as well, and that's doing- well. And that's doing beautification projects. So that fund helps to purchase, if we need gloves, if we need special tools, maybe we need shovels to plant flowers, whatever that may be. Professional development and then that lease payment for lighting, just like with the library.
And it goes through twenty forty, by the way. It was debt that we issued long-term debt.
Twenty what?
Twenty forty. It was a twenty-year debt.
I know we, we have a, a study for a master plan for August Horse Park. And now we're getting one for, for the pool area and the Navasota Center. Are we rushing it to, to come up with a general plan?
I don't believe so. So I think that we want to have a standard between all of our parks. So by doing these plans, it helps us to plan in conjunction with. So then that way, we're not doing something at August Horse that doesn't match what we're doing at Brulee. Because right now, we have a lot of mix and match. Nothing seems cohesive. So that allows us to really get a plan in place for where we want Parks and Rec to move forward and to make sure that whatever we're doing isn't contradicting.
And they'll also include a maintenance plan as well as, as a plan for how we're gonna become ADA compliant. All that is, is added in with the master plan.
The Parks Master Plan for next year will not duplicate the study that's being conducted at the Brulee Park. So that'll be incorporated into the master plan.
What about, what about the plan for August Horse? So they'll incorporate that?
They'll, they'll look at that and see what was planned and see how, how that fits in with the plan now.
I think they did.
And they are the ones that did that.
There are some things from that plan, for example, the dog park that has been incorporated since the plan.
Yeah, but there are other things. They had a.
Right.
A lake there and, and.
We could look at potentially, are those items still feasible or is there something else that we want to do with that?
Okay.
And staff's working to get the consultant in or at least staff to have an update at the next council meeting and workshop about where we stand on the current study.
And that's one thing we're doing through this process too, is anything that's already been looked at or whatever has been passed along to Burdette. So they have that information to be able to incorporate it. So the supplemental request of the seventy-five thousand for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and then the full-time Parks and Recreation Specialist. So moving into the swimming pool, we moved forward as if the pool would be open for next swim season. So major budget items, if we didn't do anything to what's there now, if we operated it like it was up and running, would be pool chemicals at fifteen thousand, pool maintenance at twenty-four thousand, and then lifeguard and swim instructor certifications at four thousand.
Just a question on that swimming pool. You say you have it budgeted just like it's up and running now, but you know, it's, it's not running. So.
Right. Which is why we, we are doing the study. So we don't know what that study is going to tell us. So the way we budgeted was just to work off of, just like any other year, until we know different.
What I'm getting at, I know the study gonna take some time and then to fulfill that study is gonna take some time. But I think that the community wants this pool.
And so we're gonna have to figure out how much that's gonna be. And in any addition, we're gonna have to issue debt to be able to pay for it.
So I guess my question, since we're on the pool, is that have we brought someone in to take a look at it to tell us in order to have it running next year, it would cost us X amount of dollars?
So that's part of, yes, that's part of Burdette's gonna look at that. And on top of that, we've asked other people to come in and give us some quicker quotes for it because we know, what I've heard, you don't want to wait till the end of the study to see what that is. You want something sooner. And so we've asked for somebody to come in and take a look at it to see what the cost would be.
When, when is that gonna happen?
As soon as we can get somebody in to.
To give us an estimate.
Give us an estimate.
So we haven't called anybody to ask?
We have called.
They just don't call them back or?
That's a solid number to, to get the pool up as it is now. We were hoping you guys would want to wait till the study. So we're not coming up with two different numbers and so on and so forth. I mean, I can give you a number now, but it won't be, you know.
Should, should we prepare to, to be open? Fix it to be prepared to be open, no matter what the study is? Otherwise, we lose another year and then another impact on our citizens that want to use it. Or do we wait and do nothing and just act like it's working fine right now?
So again, until we have some idea of what the costs are gonna be. And like I've said before, it, it, it's gonna be significant dollar amounts.
Yeah. Well, let's just say it's a hundred thousand dollars. Could you not add that in there and just plan and then move it over if it's not enough?
Correct. But I, I gotta know what that number is. And then, and then I also need to know if council's okay with spending a hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna just keep for one year and then do something else.
But if the pool stays where it is and the motors need to be replaced or the electrical needs to be replaced, I don't know that a study would come in and say, remove all the electrical or the pumps or whatever.
But that's what the study's gonna do and.
I'm just saying that I don't know that this, this doesn't appear to get the pool fixed for next year.
This is the operating cost part of it. This is not, this isn't to get it up and going. And I've explained to council that we, there's no way we get those numbers by this meeting. And so we, we will try to do what we can to try to get some numbers to you sooner than, before the, the actual study is completed.
We can always do a budget amendment though. It's not something that.
Correct. Correct.
Just say no, you know.
And, and part of the study is, I think one of our options would be leave everything as it is and get it fixed to where it needs to be. And so they'll provide an opinion of probable cost. And so we can ask them, say, we don't want to touch the pool. We just want to know what it's gonna take to get it running the way we need it to run for next year and ask them for an opinion of probable cost on that.
My concern is that it takes a bit to get a pool person to come out. And if it's gonna take us another six months to get the report back and including all of the meetings with citizens, even if they came back and said, yes, let's do it, that's gives us three months to get somebody in and it's not gonna happen. I mean, I just.
We, we haven't, I know, I don't want to speak on Jennifer's behalf, but have been researching some reputable pool companies that could come in and give us a more holistic view, not just, I think what's been happening from my perspective is maybe somebody will come in and they'll say, oh, the, the pumps, they look at the pumps. Well, then somebody else, and it's this issue. And then something else breaks and it's this issue. So we really want someone to spend some time looking at.
A complete.
The complete picture of what.
And then you find the leak too.
Yeah, I mean.
Where is it?
We do want it to, obviously, we want it up and operational, but we want it to be done holistically, big picture versus piecemeal, I guess.
I just didn't want to give you incorrect numbers.
Yeah. And I'm not asking for that. I think that's great. I appreciate you not doing that. But I'm just saying that time is of the essence in trying to figure out if it's gonna be open for summer of next year. And if, if we aren't working on it diligently today, it will not be open for next year, even if we put a hundred thousand dollars in it.
Yeah, that's my feeling too. Let's, let's not wait to two or three months before the pool is getting ready to open and try to get it fixed. Let's work on that right now.
And, and we're currently working on some of those companies coming down to give us a, a cost of what it would take, not just to limp along another season, but to actually fix it properly and make it last if, if that's the direction you chose to, to go.
We can, we'll, we'll work on that for you guys. We'll, we'll get that done for you.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To start with the marketing and communications budget, on the bottom staffing chart, there was a typo under the budget fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. That marketing and multimedia specialist position should have a one next to that because it was budgeted for in that fiscal year, making the bottom row two. That position will remain budgeted for, but it will not be funded this fiscal year.
So, excuse me, I might ask Jason this question. It was, it was funded last year to have a two, right?
Correct.
Okay. And just only one. And then this year, it's gonna be budgeted for two, but only one.
We're, we're gonna keep the FTE. So the position will still be there, but the budget will not be there.
Okay.
So that means in future, if there is a time when we say that we need it. So here, here's the thing. We're moving forward with, and get too far into her budget, is we're asking for the Main Street Manager. So if, if we don't move forward with the Main Street Manager, we're gonna need this position. So ideally, we're moving some of those duties over and I'll let her talk about, about that. But, but we're keeping the FTE, the position, but there's no dollars allocated to it.
Yeah. No. And then continuing with major budget items, we've got National Night Out, just helping PD with that, advertise it. And then the Martin Luther King Parade, Easter Egg Hunt with Living in Triumph. Those are both partnerships that we just help with resources and advertising dollars for both of those. And then promotional materials and swag, twenty thousand dollars. Our website is thirteen, five ninety. And then publications and examiner, digital, social media advertising and publications such as magazines. These are all advertising dollars at seventeen thousand. And then staff development and events, thirteen thousand, three oh two. And then this year, Flash Vote, the survey tool got moved to the marketing budget. So that's ten thousand, nine hundred, as well as Everbridge for Nav Notify with five thousand, seven hundred and twenty. And then the bottom advertising is specific for council requested ads. So if you wanted us to do City of Navasota advertising, those are dollars that we can use for anything that y'all request. And then changes to the tourism budget. Obviously, Texas Birthday Bash was now contracted for a fifty thousand dollar title sponsorship. And then the Main Street Manager will be added through hot funds. And then not doing Texas Birthday Bash allowed for seventy-five thousand dollars for the Parks Master Plan, two hundred thousand dollars for Streets Program, fifty thousand dollars for tree removals, and then the Parks and Rec Specialist.
So those are areas. So when, when you say, hey, we're not doing Texas Birthday Bash, you get, where, city, where did you put your money? These are some areas or some items that we looked through the budget and added those funds to. So understanding Parks Master Plan, moving forward with that, you wanted additional street funding for two hundred thousand. When Jennifer gets up and does the public works budget, you'll hear about the tree removal. And you've already heard about the Parks, Parking Rec Specialist.
And then major budget items, like I mentioned, Texas Birthday Bash sponsorship at fifty thousand, Treats on the Streets. Again, this is just to assist PD with advertising. And then I believe the city hosts a booth, so doing that. The Juneteenth Celebration, fourteen, twenty-five. Sounds of Summer, twenty-three thousand, two hundred. Freedom Festival, and this includes the fireworks show and entertainment for thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy. Home for the Holidays, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred. Publications here, this is tourism specific, so visit Navasota at fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty. Advertising for citywide tourism, thirty-six thousand, five hundred. And then advertising specifically to downtown is twenty-five thousand.
And Mayor and Council, so on the Freedom Festival, just FYI, there was a mistake that the mayor found when he was looking through the budget. That number should have been thirty-five thousand, but we're, we're gonna keep with the thirty. We'll find the five thousand somewhere else. I didn't want to go in and change your entire budget, but just FYI. The five thousand dollar increase in the fireworks is what we, we missed. When we did our line item detail, we, we captured it on our site, but we didn't put it in for, account for it in the total budget. And so that's the difference of five thousand dollars.
Also, I would say, keep in mind too, that there's a lot of things that aren't gonna be on our paper that, that her department's gonna work with the chamber on. And there's gonna be a lot of benefit coming from that that doesn't have a dollar attached to it, wouldn't you say?
Correct.
What, what does that mean?
Well, the, the chamber promotes things for the city and city gets revenue from it.
Okay.
So.
So the, the Blues Fest that's gonna be going on.
That's a good thing just to note.
Yeah. You're right.
And then the.
Some of the advertisements for downtown be rolled over into.
So the, so.
Into the Main Street project?
Yes, sir. So the addition of the main, so part of the amount here where you see on the supplemental request of the hundred and twenty-eight thousand total for Main Street Manager, twenty-five thousand of that is specifically for downtown advertising. So right now, currently, your downtown, there is no advertising. We specifically have for downtown. And so by bringing on the Main Street Manager, there'll be twenty-five thousand dollars will be specifically used for advertising for downtown.
A question, Jason.
Yes, sir.
When you said use directly for downtown advertisement.
Correct.
Would it be advertising the businesses downtown?
Businesses, any of the events or any, anything, anything that's downtown.
So Sounds of Summer would fall under this person's position. Freedom Festival, anything that's hosted in downtown would fall under Main Street Manager.
Be taken away from.
Well, I'd be so that I'm supervising the Main Street Manager position.
Right. So we already, we already count for advertising for, advertising's already built in these in Sounds of Summer, Freedom Festival and Home for the Holidays. There's a portion of it that's, that's tied in there already. But we've got additional advertising above and beyond what's already budgeted in there for downtown. So that we can add additional for Sounds of Summer, Freedom Festival, Home for Holidays, Sippin' Scrolls, anything else that happens in downtown. Any type of event. And again, part of the Main Street program will be for the Main Street Manager to develop that program and decide what, what needs to be advertised for.
And the, the salary for the Main Street person would just only come from the hot fund?
That is correct. That is correct. So no taxpayer, unless you're, you're a taxpayer here and you're going and spending the night at the hotel, will not have to fund this. These are funds coming from visitors that stay in our hotels and are not regular residents here. These are overnighters where they come in and spend their sales tax money and stay in hotels and then they go home.
And just to explain, for those people that have asked a lot of questions about this Main Street Manager position, what, what is the function that's different than the people that are currently working? I, I mean, I assume it's gonna add extra work for her, but there's, you have to have a Main Street Manager in order to be a Main Street.
So I've asked, I've asked her to put together some highlights of what, what that means. And so she can go over that list of what, what kind of, what kind of things that the, this position will be doing, as well as some of the benefits.
And who is Heather?
I mean, I said, Taylor. Sorry. Heather is. We don't even have a Heather, so.
Um, I do think it's important to note that from the adopted strategic plan from twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, goal number one was to plan for smart growth while maintaining small town charm. And objective one point two of the plan states hire a Main Street Director. So like we did mention, that is a requirement of becoming a designated Main Street. For the program, you have to have a position completely for Main Street. Some of the benefits of this and things that they would be working on, like we said, managing downtown projects and events, tourism projects and public art initiatives, and then downtown business development. And then we've asked, we've been working with a consultant with Main Street. And some of the things that are downtown would benefit from this is a range of design services to help downtown property owners undertake effective rehabilitation, adaptive reuse and infill projects, as well as reimagining public spaces in the district. And then assistance to Main Street merchants to support branding and marketing efforts. So those are just some of the big highlights, but really, it would just be to promote our Main Street and give them some more resources.
And, and so for instance, we, we, right now, we have a vacancy in our economic development. We asked, can you combine the two? Can you just want to do economic and Main Street? And they said, no. This position has to be solely dedicated to Main Street. And they said, no, this position has to be solely dedicated to Main Street. It could be Main Street Economic Development.
What are the parameters of Main Street? Does it have to be on Washington Avenue? Or can it be around the corner?
I think it's, we geared it towards Central Business District.
So is this.
Bravo District.
Is this position, uh, will it be enough work for this person just to do only that?
So, yes, sir, so that's part of what I mentioned earlier. Um, this position will be handling a lot of the events that we have downtown.
Right, but they all spread it out.
Correct. So, uh, that will be reporting to Taylor, not Heather. And, um, and so with that.
That would be well.
It will allow her to do more of the marketing pieces. Uh, just FYI, uh, we, we started a new Facebook page also, uh, for Farmer's Market. So make sure that you able to go out and Facebook has a Farmer's Market page. But she'll be handling more of the digital uh and marketing piece. And this position will be handling uh the events as well as working downtown merchants. And yes, sir, I think there'll be plenty of work to do for this position. And the position has to be, again, it has to be a full-time position dedicated specifically for downtown.
It's a lot of those things that we aren't doing now.
Okay, but I, I guess I'm gonna say that, uh, the manager, but you said that you're gonna be over that person.
It still is, that's correct.
Okay. So it's not a standalone position?
It, the downtown manager. It, it, correct, downtown manager is a, is a position that's going to report to another position.
This is that other employee that we're not really having on the other side, I mean, that position, but the.
In lieu of, correct, yes, sir.
It looks to me like, uh, Brenham is a Main Street.
City and LaGrange.
Mm-hmm.
And they both had a lot of great comments about the position and kinda what it has done for their downtown.
Round Rock is another really good one to look at as well, they've had a lot of success.
And we had it.
Georgetown.
Well, I don't see Brian on here, now, they could be, but I just looked at the map today.
Will be.
Yeah.
The state is also going through a big revamping of the program in general. Um, they were supposed to have released all of the new guidance in July, but we haven't seen it yet, but we're watching closely. So, uh, a lot of cities will go through the process, whether they've already, they've been one in the past or not. I think everyone has to go through this new process that they're outlining to become a designated Main Street city, so.
So what happened was.
So it was actually one of the first ones.
Correct.
In the seventies and eighties, early eighties, I guess.
Um, what happened is a lot of cities, they get away with the full-time position, and um the state came down and says, no, that's a requirement, and so we need to go back and reorganize. And so, um, again, they're in the process of releasing that application process. Um, and this position will be funded through the hot, the hot funds.
But this is something that we would be awarded?
Yes, sir. Or not. Or not, but there is a high probability, uh, that we are going to be able to get this. Again, because there is a, um, what do they call it, um, probation period, it's a.
Yeah, so there's uh kind of like an, I can't, I think it's, the term is affiliate.
Affiliate, affiliate, that's it.
You become first, like before you can get the full accreditation. Um, but the consultant that we've been working with, I'm not sure how many years we've been working with her, has been kind of directing us, you know, on the best steps to take to move forward. And she feels very confident that we're in a good position to apply for the program. We just need to kind of finalize these things that we're missing in order to be able to do that.
So do we have everything in place already that we need, or we're gonna have to add more things?
No, sir, this is, this is the last thing we need to, to finalize it, yes, sir.
Unless they change the guidelines.
And what are the benefits that we get from this?
There's a lot, there's a full list that I can send you. I think the big ones that I mentioned were the downtown property owners can undertake effective rehabilitation. Um, to reimagine their spaces, get maybe, get some grant money for their downtown buildings, get assistance that way. Um, and then assistance to Main Street merchants to help support their branding and marketing efforts, as well as some professional development for this Main Street manager to help guide them how to promote our downtown area and, um, the events, as well as pushing the businesses.
So they can get grants and loans to pick up their buildings.
That you couldn't get unless you're a Main Street city.
There are several, there are several grants out there that you can't.
Said maintain our heritage down here, so that was a big response, right?
Yes, sir.
It looks like that they've, um, have product and investment in these districts at five billion dollars. Uh, I think that was last year in rehabilitation. I don't know if that's true, but that's the.
My last question on this, uh, we will not be taken away from another organization by taking this hot fund money, paying this manager.
So, no, sir, so again, um, when we go, when we go through the hot funds, I'll, I'll explain to you where the funds can go. Um, but no, sir. This, this allows you to spend your hot funds. Right now, your hot funds keep growing because you don't have.
Funds are restricted on how that can be spent, real restricted.
Yeah, and so we'll talk about that, but we're only limited to spend X amount on grants.
Any other questions?
What was your name?
Eric Parkes.
It ain't good.
Lupe, did you bring a glass or something?
Uh, could we, could we, could we take a quick break?
Yeah.
Now that you've already walked up there, so.
Here, I'll hand these out.
Yeah, that'll take a few minutes.
Mayor, you ready for us to start back?
We will reconvene.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Uh, Lupe Ozalo, Development Services Director. Uh, I gave you a copy of my cheat sheet for my notes, uh, just in case I veer off, you keep me on track. Um, so we'll start first with the, uh, with Economic Development out of the General Fund. Uh, so this, this position, as Jason mentioned, it is funded, however, it is vacant currently. Uh, right now, I'm the primary point of contact for any, uh, Economic Development inquiries. And then the tasks are being split between myself, Taylor, and Kristen, uh, until that position is funded. Um, and again, this position is just important. They're gonna be instrumental in getting our Sherp Distribution Facility here. Um, so that, that'll be their first task at hand, uh, once they're in, hired. Um, and really, I think it's, it's mainly just the, in total of a hundred and seven thousand, it's, it's primarily for the position itself and some fines and fee, not fines and fees, but the, um, uh, salary and benefits. And the major budget items, again, professional development, memberships, and some IEDC and TDA awards.
The Mayor and Council, we are planning to submit awards, uh, once Wildfire Mead, uh, is open. That'll be the primary award that we try to, try to, um, publish about how that process went through. There was the Public Works Warehouse, we went out for bids, uh, wanted to bring specifically something in town that kinda attracted to that area. And Wildfire Mead is, and Brewery is what came of that, and now it's open. So that's the plans for next year submitting for these awards.
To summarize, the Development Services, uh, Department, it continues with five full-time positions. Um, one of the big things here, that's, that's a, a big jump, is professional fees compared to what was budgeted, to what the end of year estimate was. Uh, that was really directly attributed to plan review fees and inspection fees. Uh, we didn't have a building official until late December, uh, finally hired. Thankfully, we got, Nick, he's been just a great addition to the team. Uh, but until then, we were utilizing Safe Built, and their fees, uh, were very expensive, uh, to review and then come out and inspect. And so, uh, we overshot about thirty, about thirty thousand dollars on that budgeted, um, let me put on my glasses. On that, on that budgeted ninety-two thousand. Um, and so, uh, and there was also other, other plan review fees. And generally, those are passed through because that is what we charge to the customer. And so even though it's reflected on here, it's a little bit higher, uh, we're also getting that revenue on the revenue side. Um, so that kinda helps balance it a bit. Uh, so all the, all the positions funded for five is a total of three hundred and ninety thousand. Um, and again, it's five, five positions. Uh, major budget items, twenty thousand dollars to demolish substandard buildings. The current fiscal year, we didn't actually, uh, spend any of those dollars. Eric did a great job working with property owners, and, and all the demolitions that you've seen this current fiscal year have all been paid for by that property owner. Uh, so we weren't, we didn't have to use any of the funds allocated, so that's why you see a slight drop here. Uh, we're hoping to continue that and, uh, but still have some ready in case we need it. Um, same thing with the mowing, uh, mowing funds, which is really nuisance and abatement fund. That's how it's, uh, for ten thousand dollars. Um, and that is for your unsightly matter cleanup and tall grass. Uh, we have the third-party inspection services, the twenty thousand dollars, that's specifically for, let's say, if Nick, for whatever reason, you know, is on leave or whatever, and we need some plans to be reviewed and plumbing inspections to be done, those have to be done by the third party. Uh, he is cross-training Alan on a lot of those inspections. As a matter of fact, he, he even shadows Alan on some plumbing, uh, as allowed by the Texas State Board of Plumbing. Um, and so Alan has really been just absorbing a, a lot of that. So we don't, we don't anticipate to use that fund, but we have it in there just in case it's needed for, you know, a week or two if, if Nick ever decides to take a vacation, if, if he has time. Um, the twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, plan review, uh, third-party plan review services, that's specifically towards the development side, right? So everything we send to Bioengineering or Bureau Veritas for fire review, uh, we have that budgeted there. And again, those are pass-through costs, uh, that we'll try to close that gap more this year. With any fees that they charge, we'll pass on to the customer. Um, in terms of the supplemental requests, just a big highlight, uh, second code enforcement officer was not funded. Um, and neither was the equipment and supplies. Equipment and supplies, we'll be able to take care of it with some cost savings on the current budget year, and then maybe some repurposing the funds on the next fiscal year. Uh, so that, that shouldn't be, shouldn't be a problem. The second code enforcement officer wasn't funded. Um, we really just sat down with the team, got with Eric. Uh, Nick has a lot of experience working in the city of Brian on what they've done for code enforcement initiatives. And so really, we just regrouped and said, instead of kinda playing, um, whack-a-mole, right? I mean, we, we, we respond to complaints, code enforcement complaints, but instead of it being a little bit, a bit more random, uh, we're gonna implement a system. And it's actually already been in place for the past week, it was in your weekly update this past Friday. Um, and so really, it's dividing Navisota in four pieces, uh, like a pie, right? Uh, we're using LaSalle in Washington, and so every day of the week, it'll be focused on those areas. And of course, the thoroughfares, uh, get attention every day. Um, and so moving forward, we'll try to streamline and really just, um, you know, increase the volume. And with that, of course, it's gonna mean more letters to the residents, more, more, more letters to our customers. Uh, so we are making some changes on the letters. Uh, in, in the, in the essence of efficiency, we previously did a, um, like a courtesy letter first. That was really just, I, I call it like the nice, the pretty please letter. Uh, if, if the violation or issue wasn't corrected, then a second letter would come, which is a certified mail, um, notice of violation, right? It gives them the full legal, um, information and how much time they have to correct it. Um, because we're gonna do a zone-based inspection, just getting feedback from surrounding cities and really relying on Nick, uh, to provide that feedback. That means the volume is gonna go up significantly, and so we have to be efficient. So what we're doing is we're combining that initial nice letter with the legal letter, um, to, to allow for high volume and then easy follow-up the next week on that same zone. Uh, and so we've, we've rolled out that in the last week. Uh, so far, it's working well. I haven't, we haven't received any angry calls so far, so I think the, the letter kinda softens it a bit, uh, but it still gives them the full legal, um, notice of violation and how much time they have to correct, so.
And so Lupe and our marketing, um, have been getting together and put together some publications and so on. If you've seen on social media, we pushed out some things recently about, uh, try to beautify, uh, your, your home, beautify the neighborhood, uh, pick up debris, mow your yard, look, make sure you don't have junk vehicles and those type of things.
Right, it's all, it's all in the Keep Navisota Beautiful theme, and that's actually reflected in those letters as well. Um, and so, moving on to Keep Navisota Beautiful, this is the Keep Navisota Beautiful Commission. They, they primarily have one event per year, and it is a trash-off event, and that's what's budgeted here for a little over four, four thousand dollars. Uh, we're gonna try our best to look at more programming, more, uh, just more events in general for Keep Navisota Beautiful, maybe some initiatives that don't cost a lot of money. Um, but for the time being, this is what's budgeted, um, for next fiscal year. So in the technology, uh, Technology Department, continue funding of one full-time position, uh, with MY. The big, big cost items is, is CitizenServe. Uh, that's the software that we use in Development Services for development permitting, code enforcement, and licensing. It's just really been a, a great addition, and it's, it's allowed us to do a lot with a little bit of staff. Um, and so hopefully, continue to fund that. Uh, copier rentals for forty thousand dollars, so every, every department, every facility here has a, a copier. We recently added a second one to upstairs, um, and so that, that covers it. Uh, in-code renewal, this is probably the biggest ticket item here. Um, in-code is, is expensive, um, it gets the job done, it's not, not the prettiest currently. Um, however, recently, we were informed of, uh, our in-code ten migration, so now we're gonna get on the latest and greatest finally. We budgeted it for this current year, it didn't happen. Uh, we were able to use some of the current funds for other high priorities that came up through the middle of the year. So we are, uh, moving that over to the next fiscal year, starting in October for eighty-five thousand. Um, we actually got notified this week, or last week, uh, we're finally on the schedule. So there was a big backlog, there's a lot of cities that use in-code, and everyone wants the upgrade, and we were on the list. So finally, we, we came to the top of that list, and so, um, we're asking for that to be funded for the next fiscal year. Um, we're budgeting thirty-three five for replacement of computers, equipment, things that come up. And on the supplementals, uh, there was, uh, a, a new Citizen Serve account that was added. I think we'll be able to, to, to figure that out, just doing some, if, if the licenses, the license gurus for that software company are not watching, maybe share an accountant too, we'll see. Um, and then the new, uh, CEGIS software and Navisota PD Mobile CAD, both of those are just things that we need. Um, the Mobile CAD one is important because currently, uh, if, if PD responds to a call, dispatch doesn't really have a fancy map to show them where that officer is. And so by implementing this software, they'll be able to see live on a map, uh, where each unit is on the, uh, on their call. Um, and I think that's really the, the big highlights for, for IT.
Two questions, uh, right quick, Lupe. Um, so do we need the, uh, the backup with Central Link and BB call since we're going with the iPhone?
Yes, sir, yeah, it's actually gonna be more, uh, more critical that we have that backup. Uh, moving, moving to Datavox, um, the new phone system, and really, a lot of these, uh, programs that we use on a day-to-day basis, e- even the in-code ten, that's moving to the cloud, so it's all dependent on having an internet connection. And so having a primary connection and a backup connection is even more so important now, uh, moving forward. I mean, those, uh, those programs work well on the cloud, they, you know, they don't rely on a local box upstairs, they just run all the time. Um, and so having two internet connections is, is actually more important moving forward, so.
Next question, the computers for employees, what would that be used for?
So, uh, we're looking at, you know, we're really trying to get a schedule together on how old computers are. Uh, there's some computers probably still in use that are over seven, eight years old. And so one of the goals for, um, uh, MY this year is to come up with a full inventory of all equipment and computers and list out how old they are. And we need to get on a replacement plan. Um, you know, after, after six or seven years, getting a computer replaced, um, is gonna be important, right? So we don't end up with twenty-year-old, fifteen-year-old computers. So, uh, that thirty-three thousand ideally is gonna take some of those that, that are needed, and if we need more, either that budget goes up or it goes down.
This is gonna be computer for the office, not for laptop to take home with you and everything?
Every, well, everything, like some, some, some employees have a laptop only, they don't have a desktop computer. Like for, for example, myself, I have a laptop, and I only have the screens upstairs. So when I'm upstairs, I plug it into the screens, and when I leave, I take my laptop with me, so it's, it's both.
Okay.
We used to have a, we had a system for, I don't know, maybe a year, where citizens could take a picture of a violation, submit it online.
Mm-hmm.
Are we, do we have that ability now, is any of this?
Oh, yes, yeah, that is done through Citizen Serve. Uh, if you go to the city website now, go to code enforcement, you can actually submit an anonymous complaint.
Okay, but there was an app that you had on your phone that we could actually take a picture with our phone, upload it, and I think it may have worked for.
We used to have an app.
Oh, yes, um, actually, wasn't it, I think it was called Navigate Navisota?
Navigate Nav.
Yeah, that, I think there was, unfortunately, I don't think there was just a big, um. Yeah, that, I think there was, unfortunately, I don't think there was just a big, I guess, uptick in usage, so that eventually got, I guess.
So you can't do it with your phone, but you can do it through the website?
Oh, no, you can do it with your phone, actually, I, I tried it the other day, just to make sure it's still functioning. Yeah, it takes, I'd say it takes less than a minute for you to go, go on your phone, go to the city page. It'll ask you to register, but when you hit register, it gives you an option of anonymous. And if you select anonymous, then it just skips the whole registration and it goes straight to taking a picture for you. So it's, yeah, I've tried, hopefully, it's, it's intuitive for you. And, and just to touch on the CEGIS things, we had our annual CEGIS audit with the police department. Basically, the FBI just wants to make sure that we're protecting criminal information. We got an overall great score. There were some few things that they've added that we have to purchase software to meet those requirements. One of them, the more expensive one of the two is a fancy dashboard. It's almost like a, you know, air traffic control, you can see all the computers live that are on at any time, all your network equipment, so it's, it's a really fancy dashboard, but it's a new requirement. And the other is the antivirus. If you, if one of your computers has an issue, it automatically isolates itself from the network. So it's kinda like a, a DMZ, right? If something happens with your computer, you're off automatically.
Good evening, Jennifer Reyna, Public Works Director. Buckle up, we have about a hundred slides on public works, so we're gonna try to knock them out quickly. So the first section of Public Works is sanitation. I'd like to just kinda point out, the, two of the high-ticket items is your maintenance and your services. That's at one point four, four million dollars, that's for the upcoming budget. That is right there, that is your Republic Services. And that is actually the Republic Services, the tree trimming. And the end of the year, we're also gonna be doing mulching at the brush facility maintenance. We're gonna go out and take all those trees we picked out for the last two years, plus from the storm that came through in July. So Jose's working on getting a company to come out. Hopefully, by the end of the fiscal year, we can have that done. So that's gonna be included, that big-ticket item does include Republic Services, tree trimming, and the mulch that we're gonna be toe-grinding.
When you say Republic Services, what, what really is that?
Cause we're not paying for the people's trash, cause they're paying for it themselves.
That's, so they pay us?
We, yeah.
They bill us, and then we have to pay Republic Services.
So this really isn't money that we're, that's our, but, I mean, we're getting paid for this.
So on a monthly average, for Republic Services is about a hundred and nine thousand dollars that we pay them. But we get that back from what the customers pay. So we look at twenty-three dollars and seventy cents is your, on your bill for garbage pickup. And then that's not included if you have extra poly carts, and that's not commercial or anything else. That's just residential, one cart, twenty-three dollars and seventy cents. And then on the bottom, Capitol Outlay is at a hundred and thirty-two thousand, that's actually a dump truck that we ordered last year in budget, that we should be getting it in, in the August? Okay. Yes, so we're gonna move on to.
Did they let you drive that one?
Oh, I'm good with that.
That's not any fun.
That's not any fun.
That has to do with work, so he may not wanna drive it.
Jose, you wanna get up?
Or did Heather?
Let me get my glasses on. So we have some major budget items, we have the spring cleanup. We're only gonna do one spring cleanup this upcoming year, we're gonna keep those in March. Reason being is because we have that bulk item on Saturdays where everybody brings their bulk items, their mattresses, their couches. They come out on Saturday, that's always open from nine to five over at the recycle center, so that's really working out. We, we were doing two a year, but we really didn't get a whole lot on, on the fall cleanup. So we're gonna just scale it back to once a year. And then we maintain the driveway at the recycle center. Republic Services again is one point three million. We're gonna be adding the tree trimming for a supplemental, which basically what we're gonna do is we're gonna do the northeast, we're gonna cut down, trim the trees back up to, so emergency vehicles, fire trucks, dump trucks, school, school buses can pass without hitting the limbs. So that's fifty-five thousand that we're gonna do northeast and southeast part of the town. So that's areas, what we would call area two and three. So that's in the supplemental, then we have a few lease vehicles that we have in the major budget items. On the supplementals, we have only one being funded, that's gonna be the tree trimming. Areas, again, northeast and southeast. On the old railroad ditch cleaning, that was not funded, we, that's over there, kinda in that area on North LaSalle by Jarvis, kinda floods back there a little bit. And then the Millikan ditch revision, that's something that we can probably do in Public Works. That's over there by Millikan and North LaSalle where the new convenience store is. We have some issues over there, we can probably do that project in-house.
Mayor Council, one of the things I wanna talk about real quick and briefly is the tree trimming. So currently, right now, we, Lupe and I, we looked at the code, so you have property owner, it's got a huge tree on their property, and that tree extends over into the right-of-way and preventing emergency vehicles, Republic Services, whatever to go down. What we're proposing is using our funding to go trim those trees. Is there something for council that you want us to look to try to push that back to the property owner for trimming back those trees? Is it something that we wanna look from a code side? What's your thoughts on that?
My thought would be that's a service for the city, since it's in the city right-of-way. And who's in town now trimming trees? Someone's trimming trees in town.
Tony Wong.
Are they paid by the city, the county, the state?
We're not, it's not us trimming them.
Could be energy.
Yeah, it could be utility companies.
I mean, we do trim around stop signs and stuff, cause that's a safety issue that we, we continue to do, we try to do that. So when we get a report of someone, someone not able to see the stop sign, we'll go out and trim the tree so they can see the intersection.
I think the question is, for me, how, how does it end up looking? You know, if, if it's a tree like that we've talked about before, that's really low, and I actually watched the fire department drive down the street and had to swerve, if there'd have been a car parked on that side of the road, they wouldn't have been able to get around. How do you, how do you trim it, just straight up the curb line, and how far up do you go?
So he, Jason prefers, Chief, you prefer high, lower than fourteen feet, you would like?
I think we were talking about fourteen or fifteen feet. Not just, not just go through like.
Yeah, right.
Maybe?
Butcher. You might as well tear it down.
I mean, there's probably some, a lot with trees that are not in the right-of-way that are still.
Hang in.
That hang over too, so that's kind of a, that's kind of a tough one to.
The branches.
Oh, really?
It's the branches that we would be trimming, not the, we're not gonna cut down any trees. We would just simply be trimming the branches back.
That would be considered an encroachment in the, into the right-of-way, that impedes traffic. And so once it gets to that point, under the Transportation Code, the city has the ability, the legal right to go in and remove that encroachment, so you have, you have good standing to do so.
So you could send a letter, or Lupe could send a letter to them and say, this needs to be done. If they don't do it, then we come in and cut it and charge.
That's what I'm getting at, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working through that process, so I feel like that's.
I think that would probably.
A few years back, the fire department and the street department went in together, and we did a, made an attempt. We also did, sent out information, trying to get the homeowners to do the trimmings themselves. Then we got very little response, and so that's when we went in and we started doing it. But, yeah, just doing it once, once a week or whatever, it was, we went, it was like we'd get, when we'd get down to one end, and we'd look back and the trees done grown back on us, so we just didn't have the manpower to, you know, stay on top of it.
You know about any other cities and how they might handle that kind of thing?
We can look into it and see.
Why don't you do that?
I'm just curious to see what the council's thought was on that. We'll keep it like it is here, but would, just for budget purposes, but just what your thought was on how to handle any violations stuff, so.
So I'll reach out to other cities and see how they handle the, the trees. Okay, and next we have the street department. Street department, we have it in the Capitol Outlay, that, that is consists of your Capitol Outlay projects, that's finishing up the Eighth Street, the Tenth Street sidewalk project, which was very little. You have your lease equipment and your street maintenance. Street maintenance will, hopefully will increase two hundred thousand on our budget, so that's gonna go up a little bit this upcoming budget. We have a total of nine staff, Assistant Public Works Director, two, one crew leader, one crew leader, two heavy equipment operators, two truck drivers, and three laborers. The major budget items that we have is the replacement sidewalks, streetlights. Again, the annual street maintenance, we're gonna be hopefully increasing that to six hundred and twenty-five thousand. That includes engineering. Now, keep in mind, that's also, we take that money that we do the potholes, so eighty thousand would come out of that budget. Then you have, your engineering would come out of that total. So in reality, after you take all that out, you, your budget for your project is only around five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So that's what you're actually gonna, your project will be that amount on this upcoming budget. Any questions on the street?
I don't have a question on the street, but I do wanna go back. You had the supplemental request for the Millikan dick, dick, ditch revision. And my question is, from the, from the other packet, it says that currently water flow from the old Millikan Road and the Hidden Hills subdivision, so that's not really the, that's not really the new convenience store, that's at Hidden Hills and Old Milliken.
Right, at that intersection right there.
Yeah, so I'd ask about this, I don't know if it was during P and Z or a council meeting, but it looked to me like that that retention pond was gonna be a problem from the beginning, and now the house, I think flooded, and so now they've moved the house out of the way and built a new house. But my question is, if, if that is something that the engineer would have caught early on, could we have not had to worry with fixing that ditch? I mean, it, could it have been something that Hidden Hills could have worked on as part of?
So we, so we found two things, so number one, across the street, we identified HTRI, whatever is between there and.
To the right-hand side as you're coming into town, there's a huge pile of concrete that has been placed in, just, I don't know exactly how you can see it, there's, there's a fence back there dividing, like blocking off some cows. What property is that, John McKay? So what we need to do, that property owner has blocked the drainage, so everything is now backing up, and then flooding out Jarvis, there's a tax office and so on and so forth. That's a, that's a small, that's a one piece that's the problem. So what we're gonna do is we talked to the ho, uh, landowner, and he's given us permission to remove all that.
Given us permission to remove his garbage?
Right, but it's become a big problem.
The new property owner, it wa, it was on there prior to him purchasing the property.
So it, it is, it's caused a, it's caused a problem. And he, he will show you real quick, just real quick, John, please.
And just a little bit more there. So there's this old railroad bed, right? So everything here kinda comes together, this is that old railroad right-of-way, you can see that pile kinda right there, but also this is barely overgrown, we dug into this a lot after the big storms. There's a ditch on the north side of that right-of-way, the culvert's clear. There's a ditch on the south side, and there's a ditch at the, I forget what, you call it the old, and it all, it all drains this way to get back down to the creek. And so the old ditch, the old railroad ditch right-of-way was cleaning up some of this, not just his pile, but in general, this whole area, if you drive in there, it's quite overgrown in that area.
But that pile has become a problem.
That pile has become a problem. Now, the Milliken proj, project, to put what you were saying, Josh, so what's going on there is, Milliken actually drains the north, but it actually cuts around that corner. So yes, they added some flow with this detention pond, but it's not just a detention pond. That water has to cut that harder corner, and water doesn't like turning. So our idea was that other ditch line is like right here, is basically cut out that horn so that all that water gets flowing in a better direction, cause especially with these.
It didn't have to make that turn.
You have water coming in from this way, you have water coming up from Laredo, and it's just fighting itself right there, trying to get around that.
So I, we'll just ask again about, thank you, I appreciate that. My question is, the en, the engineer that reviewed those plans, would that not be something that they would have, I mean, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar mistake, so would that not have been something that they would have caught?
And what I'm saying is, I, the main reason, best we can look into it, me, Jose, Lupe, all looked into it, it's, I would not put the main problem being the Hidden Hills too. The issue is the water coming down, coming down LaSalle, because these two ditches are at, are at capacity, because they, they need some trees removed and stuff. So this water's coming straight south, and all this water from Milliken and Laredo Street, that, that's been there for years, is all coming straight up. So you have the water like fighting each other, and if you go out there, you'll notice this, this whole ditch line, the, the grass lays down in one direction, you get up here and it looks like someone just.
Swirls it.
Swirly, like you, you're just giving itself a swirly, and that's taking so long for that water to figure itself out, that, that's actually causing a lot of backup, and that's, that's not so much a Hidden Hills problem.
But as far as that Milliken part, we, we, I think Jose and his crew can handle that part, and then we'll find some time to move that concrete.
Do you know why it's there? I mean, he just.
I think he was trying to.
Access the, some more property back there, I think.
Like a driveway or something?
Yeah, he's actually.
Basically a driveway.
The concrete, you see that he actually moved it to the front of the area, it's still like, it's still kinda on the way, but that's his property, so we're not gonna do much. So he added a cover, but the cover is only like a twenty-four-inch cover, so it kinda, it chokes that, that flow. So the water goes back to LaSalle, and then goes, that's what McKay was talking about. But once we remove that, we should be able to.
Okay, I kinda lost where I'm at. Okay, so on our. Okay, so I went over that. Okay, so supplementals request is to, actually, we, we requested a hundred thousand dollars to increase the annual street maintenance, we are requesting to do that to increase to two hundred thousand. Parks and facility maintenance is not a whole lot in that department that we have in there. Let me take a look at some of these notes. We have the mowing contract in there. The mowing contract, we actually are gonna be coming to you in September. the mowing contract, we actually are gonna be coming to you in September, we're, we're gonna rebid that project, um, we awarded a new contractor last year, and, um, due to ongoing issues, we're gonna rebid it, so, uh, we'll bring that, um, in September to get that awarded again, so that's on Parks and Facility Maintenance, um, major budget is, like I said, the mowing contract of three hundred thousand, maintenance of the Navasota Center, facility maintenance in general, electricity and lease equipment.
The mowing contract, um, right now, it's a lot less than three hundred thousand, isn't it?
Correct, it came in at, we are gonna be paying two sixty-one? Okay, but it will increase, correct?
Yeah, so he sent a, he sent a new bid today, and it's going up to, I think, two eighty for next year, with that, with that same contractor.
Correct, uh, we have, um, added some scope to that contract, um, we're gonna do a little bit more on the creek, we're gonna add more mulching, we're gonna do some herbicides in areas that we are needing, um, it, even in last year's bids, they all came pretty close to three hundred thousand, if not higher, so our second lowest bidder came in at, how much, Jose? Two seventy-four, so it's roughly around three hundred.
Was it, wasn't it like three seventy-four, and I feel like Green Team maybe was-
Yeah, well, Green, no, they came in at three hundred.
They were, okay.
Yeah.
I, I wish the pricing would stay, but the company's just not working out, they're not a really professional type organization, the ongoing complaints is basic mowing-
They'll have to bring Green Team's in.
Basic mowing skills that they don't seem to have, um-
Yeah, I think they only work on the weekends.
They work quite a bit, it's just-
Yeah, that's the only time I see them, right, on the weekend.
The ongoing items that we have to repair after they mow, let's see, supplemental, uh, we put in for a, um, like a man lift, we're, we're just gonna stick with ring nose, that's basically when we, um, change out the lights here at City Hall, Navasota Center, when we, um, do some ceiling tiles, so on and so forth, we, we put in for supplemental for that, and that will not be budgeted or funded. City Hall, this is basically, um, your, on, under staff, I have two staff members, those are your custodians, City Hall Maintenance is everything that we spend on from air conditioning to just really anything, toilets breaking, really anything that falls under the City Hall, um, utilities, professional fees, um, so on and so forth.
So, uh, the, uh, City Hall is leasing vehicles?
So the, so we, the, the-
The, uh-
The custodians drive a vehicle that's leased.
Well, we actually own that one, I think the ones that we have is, um, the Expedition is under City Hall, the new Expedition.
Expedition.
That is an old truck, so that's not a lease item, it's the, it's the Expedition that's being leased.
The, the Blues Mobile.
Yes, sir. The new Expedition.
And was there any funds put in for, uh, the leak or, in any of the issues that we have, um, structurally with the building?
So, uh, we filed a claim for the leak under the, um, clock tower that's in, up near Room Two Hundred, and then also we are gonna, um, get quotes on fixing that as well. Uh, how much, Jose, did we put in for the leak repair, do you remember?
And I don't know if the Police Department still has issues in dispatch, but I feel like there was a wall that may have been, that had a crack in it, I don't know, I don't know if any of that's been addressed over the, well, I don't know-
Uh, we did, uh, Suzie, when, how long ago when we, we had a guy come around and look at all the cracks?
About, um, three years ago?
I remember him.
We had-
On a calendar, they're like this, all the way up the wall.
There, there was some cracking around City Hall, um-
I had one in my office.
Right.
Okay, so, just asking if there was any money put into addressing those and-
I can look into the cracks, right.
I know, but, okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's, that would not be regular, right, I mean, this was probably based off of all your normal-
Bad and unforeseen things too, so, um-
AC, heating.
Okay, we, we program painting so much, so many rooms, any carpet things, and then also in this budget includes the, the liability property and vehicle insurance policy is in this budget too.
Which that increased, um, about twenty thousand from last year, because we added a more, uh, additional property and additional vehicles, so that increased. Vehicle and Equipment Services, um, so like, uh, Mr. Weeks said, that we are gonna be hopefully hiring a full-time facility, Parks and Facility, um, manager that will help Jose, um, manage that department, um, that department really needs a manager, so what we're gonna do is, instead of the technician, again, we're gonna use some of those funds, plus, um, what we, uh, what John is being paid to come in, so that will be a full-time position, that's gonna really help us out a lot on that.
But John is being paid, so we're gonna cut John, huh?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna cut his stipend out, he's not gonna actually stipend.
It's the stipend that we pay John for, it's not McKay. Uh, supplementals for Vehicle Services, I, um, uh, and, uh, requested a, a vehicle lift, um, that will not be funded, let's see, we're gonna move on to Airport, Airport, so Airport, our major, uh, budget items is our, uh, maintenance of the signs, the stripings, the lights, the fuel farm, uh, and then our ramp grant match is eleven thousand, so basically what that is, is your, um, routine annual, um, maintenance program or routine airport maintenance program, so TechSot has, uh, a grant for ninety-ten match, so they pay ninety percent and I pay the ten percent, so a hundred thousand of that, I can submit, and only out-of-pocket the city has is the eleven thousand, so recently, last couple of weeks, um, we had a company come out and do crack seal on the whole entire taxiway, and we did three, um, aprons or ramp access codes, so we had that, um, done, and that total amount, I'll submit that, and then they'll re, reimburse me ninety percent of that, so that's a really good grant, and then the AWAS, we have a inspection that we have to maintain, um, it's a requirement for that, um, system, so we'll, um, get those on the budget, and then, Mr. Weeks is gonna take over for the water fund.
So we're gonna go through these fairly quickly, so your utility funds, uh, most of these things you'll have seen in March, uh, but since we're talking big picture here, so you have your income statement from your water fund, so total, uh, revenue is around, uh, twelve point two million dollars, again, uh, the majority of that sales, uh, water sales increase is from the rate structures, notice in the middle of your revenues, Grant Funds, uh, one point three million, that is the leftover amount from the ARPA funds that we'll be utilizing for the water well that we currently are building now, uh, in addition to that, we're, uh, proposing issuing, uh, bonds, uh, for water for the, uh, water well number nine, as well as the ground storage, um, tank and the, uh, water plant, uh, so the difference between, um, the four point three and the twelve point two is about eight point two of that, seven point six is related to, uh, the bond funds and the grant. Uh, the water fund, um, we're projecting to increase personnel, so you'll see a total of, uh, seven new positions of that, six is related to the two water, uh, crews, uh, we're gonna add a, um, uh, the actual, uh, the crew leader for each new crew, and then you're gonna have two utility technicians, uh, for each crew, so that's a total of the, uh, the six, and then the seventh, uh, position is, if you remember earlier, uh, the meter technician was moved from the Financial Services Department over to, uh, the water fund. Major budget items, uh, I'm not gonna go through all these, but these represent around five million dollars, uh, again, the largest amount for non-departmental, that's that, uh, debt service fund, uh, transfer, so on one of the sheets in your budget book, uh, one of the questions was, is what, what makes up those transfers, uh, so the money for, uh, debt payments in each of your utility funds and in the general fund, they get transferred over to the debt service fund, and that's where the actual payment goes, and so that's where the transfers occur, so we got one point, uh, two million dollars coming in out for, uh, debt payments, uh, water production, twenty-two thousand dollars for chemicals, your water plant and well maintenance, uh, over three hundred thousand dollars, your monthly well production, uh, fees and TCQ, uh, fees is around forty-two thousand, we have enterprise lease for vehicles around nineteen thousand, uh, we are, uh, wanting to go out for a CDVG MIT mod emergency generator, uh, a grant for water, uh, and that is the matching funds of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and then completion of the water well number eight is six hundred and fifty-one thousand on your water distribution, uh, purchasing in the meters, meter boxes, around a hundred and thirty-six thousand, you got your meter maintenance of a hundred and eighty thousand, your fire hydrant repairs, a hundred thousand, as I mentioned earlier, you got your general fund and, uh, expenditure transfer, as well as your pilot depreciation, and the enterprise lease for the equipment, and then lease payment on those meters, again, this represents five million, your supplemental, total supplementals here, uh, equals about seven point three million, so if you take your supplementals of seven point three and the major budget items, I just went over five million, that's twelve point three million of the fifteen point two million, so, uh, these two pages represents around eighty-one percent of the budget, the, the big items here, uh, as you'll notice, is, uh, the two water crews for six hundred and sixty-one thousand, uh, we're gonna need a hundred and thirty-eight thousand to finish the, uh, Phase Four, Con Lake's water loop, uh, the new water well of two point two five, uh, the ground storage tank and water plant of three point eight, five million.
And there's, uh, weather covering for the water wells, thirty thousand, and then we have the same thing under the, uh, lift stations on, on the wastewater, that's fifteen thousand dollars apiece to, to keep the records dry, isn't it kinda, kinda pricey?
So that was based off a quick budget quote from a contractor that's done good work for us, um, what we did is, we said, look at the areas around College Station, if you've seen some of their lift stations, it's the steel cannon levered cover, it's for keeping the motors, uh, dry, we spent a lot of time over the last few years, especially, so we have it in the wells, we also have, you'll see them again on the lift stations, we spent a lot of money going to something called a conservator pump in the lift stations, they have more VFD, they're a bit more finicky, they don't like just sitting around in that Texas sun as much, so we took a successful one that Brian and College Station have used, that detail, and basically asked, what's it gonna take to get one of those installed turnkey, and at a high level, that's what we were told. They're usually about, probably six to ten foot wide, depending on the actual setup in the area, and probably four to six foot wide, it's not just for keeping the records dry, it's also much better for the equipment, it is part of keeping the records dry, that's great, too, um, every once in a blue moon, Matt gets audited on those by TCQ, that you're actually checking your daily logs, but it, it, it does do more than just keep the records dry, sir, it, it's much better for that electronic equipment that we right now just have kinda roasting in the sun.
It's the life of the equipment.
Yes, sir. I'm really targeting well four to be one of those, um, right now, we use a piece of plywood, uh, this last year in our emergency repairs, we ended up sp, putting a lot of money into that new pump system, um, well seven as well, that would be the first two I'd probably put those coverings on for water wells, because we just invested a lot of money on those electronics, so we really wanna get them in the shade, out of the elements a little bit, without going crazy and building a whole building right there.
There isn't something else commercially available that we might come in a little bit cheaper than that?
I will absolutely look into that, I will.
That, that's kinda pricey, fifteen thousand dollars for-
It's, it's actually, you know, anchored into the ground.
We're talking, we're talking about twelve of them on the lift stations.
Eventually, yes.
Eventually, two a year type thing, and then two of them a year.
Yeah, and, uh, again, I would actually ask that, and frankly, I'm gonna make this ask, that I would, I will look into more economical options, but I would, much faster, if I can do it for ten thousand dollars, I'd rather cover three wells than cut that number, 'cause I, they need those covers, they've needed them for a long time, but I will look into other, more commercially available ones before we commit to anything.
One quick question here, um, I thought that on, on the, uh, water well, it was gonna be above ground, ground storage tank, uh, three point eighty-five million?
Uh, three point eighty-five?
Yes.
So that is, sad, sadly, gets kinda shocked up to market conditions, um, we were looking at, Jason talked about it earlier, uh, we had four billion to do, or four million, sorry, I was dreaming there for a second, um, four million to do two different contracts, one contract was the water tower, the folks who build water towers do nothing else, these guys are out of St. Louis, they go, they build a water tower, they go next door, they build a water tower, they, they will not do the rest of the work, uh, then you have a separate contract for, I call it balance of plant, that's everything else, everything that you see at our water plant, we need to replicate over there, the chlorine feeds, the ground storage tank, the pump house, the generator, all that has to get done, and that's done by more jack of all trades general contractor who handles that project, we bid this year, the water tower, it came in significantly higher than expected, um, so we went ahead and used, at that point, we said, well, pump the brakes, we need to get an updated estimate of cost on the balance of plant, and so we went out, and I worked with the engineers to go through a couple of different contractors, worked with their electrical engineer, worked with everyone to try to get you all wholesale picture price, and I don't like that number at the bottom of the page, but that really does reflect the costs that we're seeing, it's-
How big is the ground, ground storage?
Ground storage is seven hundred and fifty, uh, no, three hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons.
So we're getting two storage tanks?
You're getting one up in the air.
Tower and, and those ground stores.
Ground storage is like what you have over here off of Alcoa.
That, that's-
And then you're getting one like over, the two that are up tall.
Miller and Allen.
So on west, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, on the east end of town here, it's gonna be one above ground and one in the west.
Yes.
Okay, I was thinking it was only one.
Yeah, no, you need the one on the ground, because that's, you got water well, ground storage, pump, tower, and you've gotta complete that whole circle, so you need both those tanks to really have a full plant, that's kinda the, the, think of it as a giant battery that holds all that water coming from your well before you can push it out real fast when you need it.
We currently have two towers now, and we've got two ground storage. If we have another tower, we'll have to have another ground storage.
Just different locations.
Different locations, right, luckily, we're gonna put both of them beside each other as opposed to where it is now, where it's-
It's spread out all over.
All across.
So when we approve the above storage tank?
It, it wa, it was only the, it was only the water tower.
Okay.
We'll move on to the gas, natural gas, so natural gas, again, uh, on the revenue side, a large increase is related to, um, uh, the rate structure, as well as, uh, one of our industrial customers paying, um, the cost of other industrial customers, we look at, um, there's no increase on the staffing, currently we just have four, uh, four FTEs in that, uh, fund, and major budget items, around five point seven million, um, the, the bulk of that related to the pilot of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, uh, and then also the gas purchases of nearly three point seven, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we purchase wholesale gas, and the residents pay a hundred percent of that cost, but that is one of the pieces, and so, uh, that, that's the largest expense that we have, uh, in, uh, the, the gas fund, on the supplemental side, a couple of supplementals, there's a Phase Four, the Con Lake's gas loop of about eighty thousand, uh, and rehabbing, uh, three of our natural gas regulator stations for sixty thousand, so, and, uh, the total supplemental request is around a hundred and fifty-seven. So, and, uh, the total supplemental request is around 157,000 dollars. So you take, take the 157,000 plus the 5.7 equals the 5.9 million of, um, 5.9 million on those two pages compared to the total expenditures of the 6.1 represents around 95% of the expenditures. Waste water fund, again, wastewater fund, we'll talk about revenues, increase was related to the, the, the rate structure there of the increase. Uh, and then you look at, uh, the expenditures, you'll notice from end of year estimate of 851,000, and it's going up to, uh, right at 1.4 million. That's all related to the supplementals. We'll talk about those. There's no been change in the, um, staffing. We have five FTEs in wastewater fund, but we have 2.6 million dollars in major budget items. Uh, again, the debt service fund coming over, uh, we've got our chemicals, we got the maintenance of the facility, the sludge removal, uh, we got lab fees that we have to pay for on this sewer collection side. We got the sewer maintenance, uh, our main maintenance as well as the sewer lift station maintenance. We got the pilot and the general fund expenditure amount, we got the depreciation, and then also we've got CDBG MIT mod generators. Uh, this is the match of the 312,000 dollars for the match funds. And then on the supplemental side, supplementals is around 383,000. This is that increase I told you about, um, on the first page there, uh, with, uh, the wastewater plant oxidation ditch dredging, uh, so that's 125,000. Uh, the, the restrooms and floor repairs of 50,000, adding the chlorine scales of 25,000. Uh, the, the biggest ticket item that I see here is the, um, the Cedar Creek stabilization study that I mentioned earlier, 25,000. We're going to do, uh, sewer system smoke testing for 60,000, replace the manhole lids along with saw ditch line at 50,000. And then as Mayor Protim Gessner mentioned, the weather coverings for the two lift stations. Uh, I'm going to briefly talk about economic development. Uh, was going to get Lupe to come up here, but I'll go through it, it's not going to take much. So, um, uh, the Economic Development Board is meeting this Wednesday at 12:15. Uh, they've got a public hearing on the budget. There's not many ma- uh, major changes in the budget. Um, in fact, the miscellaneous, uh, you'll notice the miscellaneous expenses was reduced since we do not have somebody in that position right now. We're able to reduce travel and training for next year. Uh, this is, we have only one more debt payment left. So when you see the bond and loan payment of 146,000 dollars, uh, we've only got one more year after this year to pay for that, and that's for the parking lot. So that'll be paid for. Um, major budget items, as I just mentioned, is the debt payment. We budget $100,000 for special projects in case something comes up through the year. We want to provide some economic incentive. We got small grants for 10,000. We provide, uh, we have the retail coach that we, uh, contract with, provide economic development. Um, recruitment is 13,000. Uh, we've got GIS planning, the, uh, the Zoom prospect, or we split with the chamber. It's missing a zero, so FYI, it should not be $5. It's, uh, it's a five with a comma with supposed to be three zeros, $5,000. Again, that is split 50% with the chamber. Uh, the community job, job board is 3,000. The placer AI intelligence software where we use the cell phone data analysis is 16. And then looking at the conferences of, uh, $4,000. And then we provide, uh, sponsorships for economic update, uh, in January at 1,500 dollars. And again, uh, the EDC board will be considering this at a public hearing, um, this, uh, Wednesday at 12:15. Other funds, real quickly, hotel motel funds. Um, so hotel motel funds, um, projected at 225,000 dollars, right, 226,000 dollars for next year. Uh, the bulk of that, $100,000 of that is going to be used to transfer the general fund before, uh, funding the Main Street program. So, uh, as Councilmember Harris asked earlier, uh, using the funds, so state law says you can use 15% of your revenue that comes in for arts programs. So that equals 23,550 dollars. One-seventh of your revenue can go toward hot funds for advertising. So that equals 22,429. And then you can also use whatever your, whatever you want, your remaining fund balance, your remaining revenue, uh, for wayfinding. And so if you'll remember, uh, we moved forward with the wayfinding project, uh, we understood that the, uh, community and the, the council didn't want to move forward with, uh, some of the facilities and parks signage, and so we didn't do that. But the wayfinding portion, uh, as long as it met our code related to signs, we moved forward with that. Unfortunately, as we got, uh, really close to having, we got text audit approval, and then we kicked it back over to the vendor to start on the signs, and then we got updated that the vendor, uh, claimed bankruptcy. Uh, and so now we're going to, uh, have to go out for another vendor and hopefully be able to finish this project. And that was the, the remaining amount just for, uh, the wayfinding signs. Um, the, the plan, that there is no money budget in the, in, uh, the hotel motel funds for next year for the Horlock House, uh, that's something, a meeting that I need to get with, uh, uh, council members, uh, on the committee back to, uh, discuss, uh, questions that you would ask of count, of legal counsel, and legal counsel provided those. So I think we have a direction we want to talk about, and then we need to have discussion with the chambers, uh, subcommittee, uh, and then bring back a recommendation to council on next steps for that. Uh, but, uh, the idea is, uh, my understanding is the arts council is who, it, it just, I think, got a new executive director, is what, uh, Mayor Protim Gessner told me about. Uh, they have reached out to us about funding for next year, uh, since there's no arts in the program, um, actually doing the, any type mural arts, anything like that, uh, artist in residence program. Um, ideally, we're, we're looking at bringing in in-house, providing the grants. And so you take the, the 23 and the 22, um, thousand, add those together, those are type grants that we can administer here. We are currently, last year, paid around 53, 5500 dollars to the, uh, arts council to administer those. Um, I think that we, the staff can better use those funds and distribute out, uh, to more, more money to the, uh, grantees than if we just keep it in-house. And so that's the direction that we're moving, going to move forward with for next year, um, in, in allowing, um, the two to three, um, nonprofits to submit requests to us. And so we'll be putting together, um, if approved, we'll be putting together applications for those applicants to send in to us, put together a committee, and would like to, uh, have at least one to two council members on that committee to help, um, make the selections and, uh, decide on the funding piece for those, uh, nonprofits. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, capital projects. So capital projects, basically, uh, what is in this project? This is the utility, utility CIP. This is the big from 2020 when we issued the debt. Uh, this, this is where, uh, those funds are being spent. Uh, so, uh, the projection is, is hopefully project could be done next year, and we'll be able to, uh, get this balance fairly down, um, closer to zero. Uh, the next fund is the debt service fund. Again, as I mentioned, this is where the INS rate comes in. So when you look at property taxes, based on the assessed valuation and, and based on the proposed INS rate, this is how much revenue you'll be bringing in, is 383,000. Uh, the transfer in is from other funds, uh, and then we're going to pay out 2.2 million dollars for, um, expenditures related to debt service. Um, grant funds, so as I mentioned before, grant funds is around 7.7 million dollars. We'll talk more about that on the last slide. Uh, cemetery operating, uh, around 165,000 dollars, um, is budgeted. Again, pulling down, uh, some of those, uh, fund balances. Uh, board of firemen's, uh, so, uh, Fire Chief Kokoski talked about this. Ideally is to, um, phase this, uh, this, uh, 27,000 dollars out. And then we got the tax increment reinvestment zone. As, as a reminder, 50% of the, uh, proposed tax rate of 50, uh, 78 cents, uh, that is in the TERS, that revenue goes into here, and that projection for next year based on, uh, the, the new property increases and everything is around 71,000 dollars. And then we have our 501(c)(3), Foundation for Community Projects. Basically, this is where we pay out the blue, uh, the blue, the blue Santa donations come in, and then we, uh, uh, transfer that money out to, uh, our police department for them to be able to spend and buy those things for the kiddos, as well as our library and other PD, uh, donations and, um, things that come in through the 501(c) through, uh, through this, uh, organization. Uh, CIP projects, so, uh, last, uh, last slide here, as we talk about the budget. General fund, as I mentioned before, we've got design engineering for the new fire station for 600,000, replacement of the roof for the library for 225. In the water fund, we've got $2 million slated for water well number five, uh, the completion of that, we could completion of the 750,000 of elevated water tower at 4 million, the ground storage, uh, tank and water plant to finish out that at 3.85 million. The new water well, uh, number nine that we need to add is 2.25, and the emergency generators for, uh, the water well at, uh, 187,000. The natural gas fund, uh, completion of the higher pressure loop system at Pecan Lakes, that total cost of that project is 1.1 million. Wastewater fund, again, matching funds for the CDBG MIT mod emergency generators, 312,000. Uh, the hotel motel fund finishing out phase one of the wayfinding for 80,000. Uh, capital projects finishing out, uh, the 2020 utility CIP project of 7.6, 7.6 million. And then the grant fund. So our, um, our, our graduate engineer, um, decided he wanted to, uh, put a lot of grants out there, and so we had to make sure that we covered the revenue and expenditure. And so what you have before you is the CDBG TA, uh, Community Development Block Grant for 675,000, uh, with no matching on that. Uh, the CDBG JLO Harvey Funds, 996,400, no matching for that. And then, uh, the two CDB, CDBG MIT mod for the emergency generator for the water and for the wastewater, uh, as I mentioned before, you do have matching funds for that. And then for the gas grant of 4.2 million, my understanding is no match for that?
No match.
No match for that either. Uh, so there's quite a bit of, of, uh, grants that we have in there. I, I've heard from council, you want us to try to seek those grants, and so, uh, we, we put them in there, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward with, uh, some of those grants. Um, the budget calendar, so as we conclude tonight, uh, we'll, as your budget retreat here, budget, uh, workshop, uh, on August 26th, we'll actually have, as part of the workshop, we'll have another opportunity for you to discuss the budget in case you have anything you want to talk about. We'll also place that item on the, that, that night's agenda as a regular agenda item, whether you want to talk about it or, uh, uh, pass on and not have to talk about it, whatever you want to do, it'll be on there. September 9th, uh, we'll ratify the tax increase. Uh, again, even though it's not a tax increase, it is a tax increase because the total revenue increased, just the way the state tells you have to word it. Uh, and then we'll have a public hearing on the budget, public hearing on the tax rate, and then also discuss the utility rate increases because we have to do an ordinance for that. September 26th is when we need to have it all wrapped up in a bow, and we're going to vote on the budget, the tax rate, the utility rate increases, and vote on the republic services rate increase. At that time, any questions? You can reach out to myself or CFO. Yes, sir.
Do we have a certain time limit for republic service?
Uh, I would have to look at the contract and see what the contract is, but my understanding was a five-year contract, uh, so we would be starting on year three. But I have to check on that.
I think you're correct.
I can, I can get everybody answers, I'll email you all that answer for that. Any other questions? So to, to wrap up on the budget, um, I ha- I think I have one note. Uh, we will, uh, move forward with adding the cameras to the budget. Um, I think that was the only item that I had on, um, any other things. Mayor, that's all I got on the budget portion.
Okay, item seven, consideration of possible action on proposal to adopt tax rate for tax year 2024 and announce time, date, and place of public hearings and a meeting to vote on the tax rate.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Um, on August 1st, um, Grimes County Appraisal District provided the, um, tax calc, uh, tax rate calculation. They gave us at that time the no new revenue tax rate at .4861, um, and the voter approval tax rate at .5078. The no new tax revenue, or no new revenue tax rate imposes the same amount of taxes as last year if you compare properties taxed in both years. The voter approval rate is the highest rating, or highest tax rate that a taxing unit can adopt without having to hold an election. Uh, as Mr. Weeks mentioned, um, we did receive of, some follow-up from Grimes County Appraisal District, and they let us know at that time that due to a recent change in state law relating to how the tax rates are calculated, um, that they had not, the information had not been implemented correctly by the software company that provides the calculations to the appraisal districts. So, um, the voter approval tax rate needs to be corrected. The correct voter approval tax rate should be .5215. And the difference, um, between that and what we were originally provided the week before is, um, 1.37 cents. Um, if a taxing unit doesn't utilize the full, uh, voter approval tax rate, they are allowed to bank that difference and use it in future taxing years, which is what staff has planned to do for fiscal year 2425. The proposed total tax rate for FY 2425 is .5078. Therefore, public hearing on the tax rate is required. The proposed tax rate is a reduction, as mentioned, um, and represents 2.7, 2.74% from the current tax rate that we have, um, for FY 2324 of .5221. Our budget as presented to you, um, what was built around that .5078 rate. The, the two parts, MNO and interest and sinking, um, are .4599 and .0479 respectively. In accordance with current state legislation, we will be placing a notice in the Navasota Examiner to notify the public about the date and the time that council will vote and approve the tax rate. And so we anticipate publishing the notice 26 days prior to this public meeting, which will take place on September 9th, 2024. Please be advised that tonight's action regarding the approval of scheduling the time, date, and place of the proposed tax rate will be a record vote that will be published on the notice regarding the public meeting on September 9th. Staff has also included the budget calendar, which was on Mr. Weeks' last slide there.
Mayor, Council, this item, uh, on the action items, there's specific language in the write-up, uh, that you need to make the motion, and then, um, we'll need to take a record vote on that proposed tax rate, uh, by a show of hands, um, for each one, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved that the City of Navasota proposed to adopt the tax rate of .5078 per 100 dollar valuation, the tax year 2024, and hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM on September the 9th, 2024 for the city council chambers located at 200 East McAlpin Street, and a meeting to adopt the tax rate at 6:00 PM on September 23rd, 2024, at the city council chambers located at 200 East McAlpin Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Foltz, to adopt the tax rate of .5078 per 100 valuation. And all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Same sign? unanimous. unanimous. Recorded. Motion carries. Item eight, consideration of possible action on setting the date and time for public hearing on the city of Navasota's fiscal year 2425 proposed budget.
Mayor and Council, Article eight, Section two of our charter states that the city manager shall prepare and submit to the council an annual budget on or before August 31st of each calendar year or as set by ordinance in accordance with applicable provisions of state law. And that was what was just presented on. Additionally, Texas Local Government Code, Section 102.006, states that on public hearing, on a public hearing on proposed budget, A, the governing body of a municipality shall hold a public hearing on the proposed budget. Any person may attend and may participate in the hearing. B, the governing body shall set the hearing for a date occurring after the fifteenth day. After the date, the proposed budget is filed with the municipal clerk, but not before the date the governing body makes its tax levy. C, the governing body shall provide for a public notice of the date, time, and location of the hearing. The notice must include in type of a size at least equal to the type used for other items in the notice, any statement required to be included in the proposed budget under Section 102.005b. So the earliest time that this hearing could take place is August 20th, and we are recommending that, that this hearing be set for, excuse me, September 9th.
Again, Mayor, specific language in the action, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to set the date to September 9th, 2024, for the public hearing on the city's fiscal year 202425 proposed annual budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fulks, second by Mr. Gessner, to set the date of September 9th for public hearing, city's FY 2425 proposed annual budget. All those in favor, show of hands. Those against, same sign. All in favor, it's motion carries. We adjourn.